For the opportunity to serve the city in this capacity, Lord God. You're in charge and you've always been in charge, Lord God, and I know you're gonna take care of your people as you have done, Lord God. I pray for the people that have lost loved ones on our watch, Lord God. I know you are, you sit high and you look low, Lord God. Continue to cover this city, Lord God, and continue to direct us in a way that you would have us to go, so that we can build a better and bigger New Iberia. I pray this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Praise the Lord.
To the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I just might let you permanently do the prayer. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, Councilmember Brooke Maricot, Councilmember Marvin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Dee Dee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Darrell.
Here.
Item one's public comment. I ask you to put your phones on silent or vibrate. We have any cards? Well, having no comment cards, we move on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, which will be published on August tenth, twenty twenty four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marvin Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on our minutes of the meeting of July sixteen? Hearing seen none, I should vote your machines. Three A.
David Gruner to announce his candidacy for Iberia Parish Assessor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the City Council, fellow counselor. I'm David Gruner. I'm a lifelong resident of New Iberia, Louisiana. And it's my pleasure to come before you to announce that I am a candidate for Assessor of Iberia Parish. I think many of you know that I've been a practicing attorney in this town for many years. And through that process, I've represented literally thousands and thousands of clients and been very successful in many cases. In that regard, I've been recognized as being a super lawyer, the only one in Iberia Parish that Louisiana Life Magazine has recognized with that distinction, and one of the top one hundred attorneys in the state of Louisiana. So through my career, I've decided to move away from litigation and get into more real estate practice, where I do now literally millions of dollars of closings a year. And I'm a licensed title attorney, which means I can, my opinion on title and property is insured by insurance companies for lots of money. But living in this town all my life, I think most of you know, I have always dedicated myself to public service in one capacity or the other. I'm not gonna go through all the things that I've done. But I thought of one walking up, coming here, I said, you know, even the City Council has appointed me as Chairman of the City of Police and Fire, Civil Service Board, which I did for, I think, four or five years for the city. But since then, some of the more important roles that I've served in my attempt to do public service was IDF, the Industrial Development Foundation, where I served for eight years, including as Chairman. And during my tenure there and as Chairman, we brought in, along with President of the Parish, Craig Ramirez, and many other people that worked hard for the ARCO project to the Port of Iberia, which at that time was the largest single project ever at the Port of Iberia. And it came at a time when we needed jobs in this town desperately. We were in an oilfield crisis at the time, and that project really turned out this town for the better. It was wonderful. In fact, it was so good that at the end of the project, ARCO invited Topper Bro and Roy Holloman, who was CEO of the IDF, and myself to fly up to the North Slip of Alaska to witness these giant gas compressors made in New Iberia being unloaded and used to produce oil and gas for the nation. So it was a wonderful experience. And then since then, I've done other things. I have served, as I think many of you know, on the Hospital Board, where I served also as Chairman. And during my tenure there, along with Dr. Jimmy Falteman and CEO Parker Templeton, we were successful in negotiating the purchase of a failed failing hospital, Dotreeve Hospital. And then we obtained thirty-five million dollars in bonds and were able to refurbish that and double the size of our medical capacity at Iberia General and number of doctors and further benefit the residents of New Iberia and Iberia Parish with better health care and a brighter future for providing medicine and health care for everybody in the parish. So since then, I've had two governors appoint me to the State Louisiana Public Facilities Authority, which is the largest tax-free bonding authority in the state of Louisiana. We approve over a billion dollars of bonds per year for LSU Tulane, Ochsner Hospital, the list goes on and on. And it's great because I get to see what's going on in the state and get to participate in bringing more jobs and more activity for the state of Louisiana. In fact, we just approved last month our first two billion dollar project, which is the bridge for I-ten in Lake Charles. So I have dedicated myself to public service throughout my career. So here we go. We go. Here comes the Assessor's race. And people ask me, well, David, why are you running for Assessor? Well, I gave it a lot of thought because when Taylor Barrot took the position with Jeff and Jeff Landry in Baton Rouge, as Attorney for the Clerk of Court, I was kind of in the mix of what's going on at the courthouse. And a lot of people turned to me and said, David, you got the, why don't you run for it? At the time, I didn't think too much about it, but the more I thought about it, the more I realized, you know, I have an elder law practice where I'm on TV quite a bit. I try to help people save their homes and property from nursing home expense, et cetera. And I thought, you know, the Assessor's Office fits a lot of the skills that I have, and I know that a lot of improvements that could be done there. So I gave it more thought, and then as the time went by and more people kept asking me to please consider it, I realized, you know, I really could spend the rest of my career giving back to the public, back to Iberia Parish, and this would be a great capacity to do it in, and that's why I decided to run. So here we are, Assessor's Office. We haven't had an election, what, thirty years? A long time. So most people don't even know, what is, what does the Assessor do? They think it imposes taxes, which it doesn't. So it's really, like, the Clerk of Court does a number of things. They do. They do, they, all the court filings, all the public records, conveyance, mortgages, mini clerks for criminals, civil, non-support, marriage licenses, passports, and then all of the electors commissioners in all the elections, about two hundred something employees, multiple functions. And I've got to watch David Ditch take that office from kind of disarray and low morale to now it's one of the most top offices of Clerk of Court in the state of Louisiana with the best technology. And all those employees there are friendly, and they love each other, and they work hard together, and it's a great place to work. And I see that how David did it. He didn't do it because he's been in that office for twenty years. Heck, I think he may have worked there maybe one year before. And he brought his experience in business, in the community, and in his success on the outside to the Clerk's Office. And that's what enabled him to come up with the great concept and ideas that brought that office forward. And I want to do the same thing for the Assessor's Office. Really, the Assessor's Office, what does it do? It has only two constitutional functions, okay? One, identify who owns the property in Iberia Parish. Well, that's what I do as a lawyer, as a title attorney. And I do this on a daily basis. In fact, a lot of times, we have to correct the Assessor's Office because they have the owners wrong or the descriptions wrong, which is okay. We want them to be as accurate as possible. But no bank or lending institution or anyone would ever depend on the Assessor's Office for property descriptions or owners to do alone. They depend on title attorneys like myself, Jeff Simon, a lot of local lawyers that are qualified to do that in order to determine who is really the owner, what is really the correct description. What's the other function? The other function is called fair market value. So there's only two functions of the office. It only has like eleven employees. What is fair market value? That's really what, what is the property worth? Well, I have to kick back quite a few years, not a few years ago. The federal government was expropriating land in the Achafalab Basin. They did it under the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they were doing it to make the basin wet and wild and give public more access. Well, the federal judges, which is in federal court, didn't want to get burdened with all these cases coming before it. So they decided to create a commission to oversee the fair market value, to make sure the federal government was not overreaching and that landowners were being treated fairly. Out of ten thousand lawyers in South Louisiana, who did they pick to run that commission? Well, myself. And I went before that court, and I tried dozens of cases where I had to listen to competing appraisals, competing testimony, and determine what was fair. And not one time did a federal judge ever overturn my decision. It was always correct because I did my homework, I listened carefully, and I knew where the soft spots were in the appraisals and where the, and where the truth really lied. Well, that's what fair market value is. And unfortunately, the Assessor's Office doesn't have any appraisers anymore. They used to. Now they use what's called a CAMA. It's called Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. It's computer software. When you get, when you get your assessment from the Assessor's Office and you see the number, do you have any idea how they got that number? Well, the answer is no. Why? Because they don't tell you. There's really three methods to do an appraisal. Market or comparables, the income approach, and cost approach. Which approach do they use? They don't tell you. And that's where I think, you know, we could improve. We could give the public the information they need, the title attorneys, the information we need, the real estate agents, the information they need. In other words, banks, mortgage companies, what could all benefit from that? Because then they could see, what are they using to determine that value? They're not doing that. And what really drives me right now is the cost of flood insurance. Okay, it's killing people like in Litia, Delcum, anyone below ninety. They're getting murdered. I did a closing the other day where the house, it wasn't, it wasn't a million dollar house. It was just a ranch house near Lake Penure. Was paying twenty-two thousand a year just for flood insurance. That house had been, not been sold for three years. Why? I just said, twenty-two thousand a year in flood. Who was gonna buy that? Well, the only one that bought it happened to be somebody with a lot of cash. They didn't have to borrow money from a bank. And they just offered sixty-five percent, I think, of the value and bought it because that's the only way they could sell it. Well, that's happening to a lot of people, and I think that that, that cost of owning property has to be incorporated in what is the fair market value. What else? Let me give you another example. I could put a golf ball in the lawn right here and hit it across the valley and hit two houses that are next to each other. One of them, it's not a million dollar house, but it's a very, one of the nicest homes in New Iberia, and it pays eight hundred dollars a year in flood insurance. The house next door is probably worth half its value, maybe less. It's paying ten thousand a year in flood insurance. Now, with that computer program at the Assessor's Office, will they pick up those differences? No, they won't. And that's why I think we need to put humanity back into the Assessor's Office, so that if anyone comes before the Assessor with that kind of expense, that kind of depression on their property value, they can at least have it considered. There is no, there is no due process at the Assessor's Office. Many people come to me and they say, David, if we go there to try to ask them about our assessment, we're told it's our way or the highway. You go to Baton Rouge and complain about it. Well, that's not, that's not being fair. That's not doing your job as a public servant. We need to do better, and I think I can do better. I want to be an advocate for the people. That's my, there's so many things I think we can improve with public service, little things, such as when you turn sixty. Hi, Ricky. You just popped in.
Good ways away.
Yeah, when you turn sixty-five, why don't the Assessor Office let you know that, hey, you can freeze your property values? Why, they already have your birthday. You have to have that when you apply for homeset exemption. So there's just, that's just a lot of little things that I think we can accomplish and do better. If you want someone to bring the Assessor's Office forward with progress and bring the parish forward, I think I'm your candidate. Lastly, I'll say this. Larry Richard is doing a great job as Parish President. He's trying to, we have a crisis right now in this parish. We have so many jobs coming in and no place to live. And I've been working with him, trying to help him bring in developers, bring in together landowners, and coming up with some kind of plan for building more rooftops. More rooftops means more money for you, the city, to provide more services. Instead of raising taxes, all you need is more rooftops. Well, the parish is the same way. If we had more rooftops, the council would have more money, the city would, the parish would improve, we all would have a better lifestyle. But here we are with these jobs. We need the rooftops. And I feel like as an Assessor, I know it's not my job as an Assessor, but as a public servant, I would be right there helping him any way I can to accomplish that goal. Anyway, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you for your time. Hope I didn't talk too long. Take care. God bless.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, three B.
Richard Phillips to announce his candidacy for a new Iberia City Councilman representing District Five.
Richard Phillips, I live across the street, basically, in District Five. I'm seeking the council position that Dee Dee has chosen not to go after again. So I'm not trying to displace somebody. I once went, considered District Six when I lived in District Six, and I decided to let Dustin go unopposed, which he did. So this isn't a fly-by-night decision. I've been thinking of joining the council for years. And the opportunity of replacing someone like Dee Dee, who's done a fine job, without having to fight her, I wouldn't have to come against her. I, you know, I think the timing is right. So who am I? A bunch of you do know a little bit about me, and a lot of you know nothing about me. I'm a Yankee by birth, seventeen-year-old Tulane student. I picked up two degrees, one is a master's, one's business and one's architecture. When I was in the private sector for many, many years, my attitude was to win-win. If I was selling something to someone, they needed to get the benefit and I needed to get the commission. I didn't just sell things, I solved their problems. Architecture is the same thing. Somebody wants to build a building, it's their problem, and the architect solves their problem. We were taught that. That is what an architect does. So even though I was in the public side, I mean, the private side, for about forty years, I finished in the last eleven years working at Jefferson Parish in a government position, where we went and we touched base with state, federal, local, other communities. We interacted. I was in the same department as Inspection and Code, the man behind me. You have to deal with every aspect of the built environment and all the government regulations. My sales experience gave me people skills. My education gave me education that I needed for those jobs that I did. And my last eleven years working in the public sector was amazing because we survived Katrina and we put, my department put the Parish of Jefferson back on its feet again with permits, inspections, and we helped the people get back in their homes. What I could do for District Five would be to represent the people's needs. And keep in mind, I'm a city councilman. The needs of the city have to be factored in as well as the specific needs of the district. I believe that the people, if they looked at my recommendations and what I can offer, that I would be the most qualified person running for that position. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Three C.
Ron Davis to announce his candidacy for a new Iberia City Councilman representing District Five.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and everyone else here. Yes, I'm Ronald J. Ron Davis, Senior. Here today to present myself to you as a City Councilman for District Five. I have a, well, I am a concerned citizen, first of all, of this city, which I think have, through my concerns, I've taken part in a lot of different avenues through my work experience and through my commitment to working within the community. I, I'm a family man that lives in District Five, and I've been there for over thirty years. Married to my wife, Mary Mel Batiste Davis, who also served on the school board here. So we, as a family, we're committed to community service. Within the community, I've also worked with Councilman Dee Dee Reed in several different capacities within the community. I have served as Vice President for the DNA Downtown Neighborhood Association. I've also served within the city limits of New Iberia for the Housing Authority. Served as a Commissioner there. I've served also United Way as a, in the Funding Committee. I've also served in the, the, what is it, the Head Start Community as a Vice President of the Head Start Community. I've also coached Pee Wee football for a number of years. Worked on Big Brother, Big Sisters Program, very active. I find that there's a dire need to have a connection between the community and their leadership. I know that the city offers different programs, helps administer programs as such, and there's a need for more. I find that the, let's say, mental health, for instance, okay? I think that there's a lot that goes on in the city that goes unnoticed as far as for mental health. And I think that, I mean, I was having a conversation with a person today, and we were talking about, you know, just school, ADD, ADHD, and all that other stuff there, you know, which was a pass. In some cases, people took it for different reasons, and some of them the wrong reason. But the thing about it, those kids are having children nowadays, okay? And we have that to deal with. Our police department have to deal with it in a lot of different ways as well. But that's mental health, you know, which is sometimes hard to recognize and sometimes underestimated, you know? I think that in our community, it's a lot that needs to take place. And sometimes in District Five, for instance, there, in District Five, we have a lot of blighted properties, okay? Empty lots and different things, and it may take it as a, some folks may look at it in a different way sometimes because of the way the area looks as such. But we're looking at revitalizing this in a lot of different ways and trying to push on forward and keep it moving forward from what Councilman Reed has done. And even working with the, with the mayor, because I've worked with the mayor in several capacities when I worked within Cleco. I put in twenty-plus years with Cleco, worked for Tetch Electric also, and I've served in capacities of leadership. I've, I've been the Superintendent, well, first of all, I started off as alignment for seven years, okay? Working on electrical lines here and there through electrical storms, I mean, just major hurricanes and storms as well, you know, on trouble call auditors and what have you. But even from then, I've always progressed in ways because I took what I did seriously. I'm compassionate about what I do. I'm compassionate about working with people. The, I mean, even from that alignment position of seven years, I moved up to Superintendent, okay? Which was a blessing because, I mean, I mean, I've seen progress, but I've seen some hard times too, okay? And I can recognize people from where they are, okay? Whereas I can reach out to them and we can hold this conversation as such. Some people may not know me, but I've always taught that if you don't have nothing to say, don't say nothing, okay? But if approached and stuff, hey, I can be there with you where you are, okay? Again, to, within the community, I want to make a peaceful path for the youth and the elderly, you know? The elderly out there, they are within the community and within this city. Some are materialized, go outside, go to store. So much is happening across the nation, let's not say in this city. But it's for us, our position, to be able to protect our elderly, okay? Our youth, you know, we can bring jobs in to the city. We can bring businesses to the city, but our youth need something to do, okay? They have to stay busy in different ways, and we have to keep them progressing onwardly, okay? Because that's our future, okay? We need that. You know, my slogan within my campaign is that it's our city, your vote, and our future, okay? Because, I mean, with, where we are as an elderly, we need these young kids to advocate for us and bring things forward. But we have to nurture them and so they know where we come from and they know where they're going, you know? So I hope to meet you where you are also, Council. I know there's a lot going on within the city, revitalizations and stuff is progressively looking well, but we still have a lot to come, okay? And I think that I can work with each and every one of you in making that happen, okay? Because I know most of you somewhere down the line, we've crossed paths, we've done things and stuff. And especially when I worked within Cleco, I covered all of this area. I met a lot of people within this area. I did a lot of things in this area, you know, okay? And I'm looking forward to serving compassionately, okay? So I'm not much on words as such, but I'm more of a doer, okay? So help me, help you, and we'll see you down the road. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, four A.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty-nine, and ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funding for the Acadiana Crime Lab.
This is our first hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar payment. Do we have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing, hearing, no one, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marvin Lewis and Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Thank you very much. Now we go to the main motion, and I need one.
So move.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marvin Lewis, is there any discussion on this main motion?
So, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So this money came from an insurance payment, correct?
Correct.
So that's we just totally put it on towards the crime lab?
Yes, sir. We, crime lab is important. We had committed the four hundred and something thousand dollars. We didn't really have a timeline because that was, man, a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago, right, right.
So the rest of it will come in next year's budget. If it's slow, it'll come in two years' budget, but it's coming. It's a two-year project. We're not holding anything up. I've talked to the District Attorney. So this was advantageous to make our first payment.
I think that's a good use for the money. Absolutely. Crime lab is very important. Thank you.
So Mayor, do we have the option to make it in two more payments or, I mean, three payments or is it just two?
We haven't set that in stone either way. We're gonna make the payments, but, you know, I'm gonna wait and see how the budget is. I mean, it's something we need to do. I am hoping that that's an option.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yeah.
All the bill won't be paid on day one, so we should have the option.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping. Anybody else? Nothing further? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Four B.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirty, and ordinance amending the budget to account for additional funds received for mosquito control disbursements.
This is the two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar additional money that we got this year for mosquito control. We never know exactly what the total is gonna be. It was more, so this gets it in the pipeline. Do we have a motion to open this public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marvin Lewis.
That was David Broussard.
Oh, sorry. Don't, where'd it go, Mr. Broussard? I missed it, sorry. Councilman David Broussard, is there anyone to comment on this item? Seeing, hearing, none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, thank you all very much. Now I need the main motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Marvin Lewis, is there any discussion on the main motion?
So a hundred percent of this money is going into drainage because it's required to be used as drainage money, correct?
That is all that can be used.
That's right. So it is going to drain. It's a great addition to drainage. We need.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So do we know what area of the city we're going to use the money on?
We are very fortunate, and don't get too excited, it takes a while, but we got a three-point-one million dollar grant, which does that retention pond that's desperately needed in the Acadian Acres area.
Right.
We are working through that. My clerk has been involved with that very heavily. There's studies, there's a lot of state steps. But that gave us more money in our drainage. So we're not going crazy because anything could happen. When you show me the money and we have the three million dollars after all the studies are done, after everything is approved, and we've been all the process, then we're gonna have a good amount of additional money to use for drainage. We have the million dollars that we wisely chose from ARPA. We've cleaned out the first set of canals. Additional sets of canals will bid out all of this year, so that cleans all of our major outflows. This money will go in the pot, hopefully with the three million dollars that we got a grant for, and then we will continue to do drainage throughout our whole community because we're in a. because we're an old community. Many, many areas in every district have issues where our pipes are old and either can't be, need to be changed, need to be upsized, where our manholes and our drain, street drains are, you know, we need a ton of work. So this money, wrong answer, but this money will go with the other money and get spread out through the whole community.
Okay.
There's not a district that we do not have drainage issues.
So there's no.
We're flat, and we're low.
Yeah, there's no constraints on the money, so it can be.
Just so it's drainage, all that can be used far as drainage.
No, yeah. So this is not like the C B D G money that has to be used.
This is just additional money that doesn't have any constraints on it, except that we only use it for drainage.
Okay.
And so as, as I do, as we do everything else, it's gonna get spread out through the whole community.
Do we have a list of the areas that are dealing with drainage issues? I mean, do we, like, do we know what the priority list is? Because I mean, I know I have some things, some areas in District Five that need some help.
Again, I can't tell you how quickly they're gonna get done because I can't go crazy and spend it all at once in case we don't get that grant.
Right.
But turn them in, as I know many of them you have, as, as all you have. We have chronic drainage issues. And some of them, I don't, I don't know that we can solve. There are some of them, you know, when the canal's back up, when the wind's in the wrong direction, when the bayou's high, there are times that the water's not getting out of here. Now, I can improve the drainage and move it as fast as I can as soon as that tide switches, but there are some areas that, you know, we, we don't have a way to fix them. You know, we can't afford pumps and levees, that's, that's not what we can do. On the flip side, there are a ton of areas we can work on. And if we had enough money, we could oversize a lot of pipes and help them to, to do some drainage kind of retention. That's what this retention pond that we're spending a few million dollars on is gonna do. So we're gonna continue with our engineers to look at every avenue. And I think, once that grant comes, and if we continue to get a little lucky that we get two hundred thousand dollars more than we thought we were gonna get, that's gonna go a long way over the next few years, and drainage is something, you know, really important.
Okay, all right. So I guess we can turn them in again if we turn them in.
Yeah, sure, sure. And Chandler's doing a study now that we think we're gonna have more money. Finstermaker is doing the retention pond and actually helped us get the grant. I gotta give him a shout out for that. That freed up Chandler to handle many more smaller projects, and we are in the process of analyzing quite a few of our drainage systems.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Mayor, overall, our drainage has gotten better since in the last seven or eight years, right?
Oh, in the last, yeah, definitely, definitely. We've spent a lot of money on drainage, a lot of money. We have solved some problems that, you know, I got a hard head that they said we wouldn't. So we're, but with your help as a council, both this council and my previous council, we, we made a dent in it, but we're not out of the woods. We still have areas that flood, we still have, we can't, we can't let up. I mean, and the problem is that we're such an old town.
Right.
You know, the minute you think you got it fixed, you got pipes that collapse, you got things that shift, and it, you know, you're back at square one.
And do Armaco Canal, Armaco Canal make a difference?
Armaco Canal made a big difference, and your contribution to moving that money when, when we were the, together the first time, when I was, I was here and you were there, has done a lot. That is, that, no, it has a limit. There's actually a time we have to shut the pump off because it was starting back.
You can't pump it out.
Because you can't pump out. But has it helped? Oh, yes, sir. Anybody else?
And, and that's where I was going, over the years, not just this council.
Oh, no, no.
Drainages, because it's a number one priority.
Man, I tell you all the time, there's twenty-six mayors before me. We flat, we low, I'm sure they all had drainage issues. We just dealing with them as best we can, you know?
Okay.
And, and, you know, and it's just to think it outside the box. I mean, you heard a few comments about we need to increase rooftops to increase taxes. So if we increase rooftops, we need to be, you know, be diligent about our drainage because that's gonna be more steam and more water. So the improvements we're making is, is for future development.
And, and one of the canals we're cleaning, looks like we, I can't really put it out there yet, but it looks like we have some rooftops coming. We actually have a development coming, and it's a good thing we cleaned that canal.
Yeah, we need to get it cleaned.
I'm working on it.
One more question. So do we deal with any drainage issues on state highways?
We ask the state to do it as much as we can because that's what we all pay, just like everybody tells us, that's what we pay taxes for, that's what we pay taxes for. We just had them come in, and DOT D finally cleaned a bunch of the drains on St. Peter Street and Main Street that have been clogged up for a long time, so, but on all of our state.
Still flooding in those areas.
Yes, but on all of our state highways, we ask them to do it. Can I tell you that I have sent the crews and we have cleaned some state drains? We have. Did I ask permission? No, I didn't. But, you know, I didn't figure they're gonna get mad at me. But when we have to or see a chronic problem, we use the vac all truck, we'll do what we can. And sometimes it helps us identify the problem to communicate with the state.
We have quite a few.
Could they come and do more?
Yeah.
I wish they would.
We, we have quite a few areas on Main Street and St. Peter Street that actually flood. Anytime there's a hard rain, it doesn't even have to be like a, a major storm. And, and it's been going on for a long time, and I'm just wondering, as we make, we fix some of these drainage issues in our neighborhoods because we got those, but can we also address some of those?
Some of them can be addressed, but it's a lot of money because, and then our solution is, because it's all we have, we run to Bayou Teche. If you look on Jefferson Terrace in Councilman Ledbetter's district, we spent a few million dollars, and we got to the bayou as far as we could and moved a lot of water. If you look at Hopkins Street, that's coming. The state is spending millions, I gotta give them their due on that. They're ripping up the street, they're putting new box culverts that you could walk in that will go all the way to Bayou Teche, which is gonna move a lot of water out of the West End, and then we get in a new road. But where's it going to Bayou Teche? So we can continue to do that. We have some flooding on St. Peter Street and Main that it would be a trip, but we have some small right-of-ways, and we can't determine if they're big enough yet, and we could run some piping through a whole bunch of people's yards to Bayou Teche. It might help. At some point, when Bayou Teche is high and the wind's running the wrong way, you're not gonna move that water.
Right.
So you have to kind of weigh the scale of is it worth spending that? That it can do some good, and that's some of the things that Chandler's studying right now.
Okay, all right.
Didn't we get the state to do some work on Vine Street?
We did, yeah, they did do that. That was a big project. Now, they spent millions over there, and again, where did they go to Bayou Teche?
Yeah.
But St. Peter and Bank, just a hard rain, it's flooded.
Yes, that's one of my chronic problem areas.
St. Peter and Corrine, Main, there's so many areas.
I know.
And then obviously in the neighborhoods. I'm just wondering if we can even address those, those have been going off for a long time.
Some I think we can, some I'm not positive, but this, this and getting money like this, and if that grant really does pan out, we're gonna finally have a chance to find out if we can fix them.
And do we know when the next set of canals are gonna be clean?
Um, man, I'm on them, because I need to get that all bid this year. We have to have it all committed, it has to all be done this year, but they have to bid this year because we have to commit our ARPA funds by the end of this year. Have till twenty-six to spend it. I think he told me within a month, another package would bid. Within a month after that, another package would bid. And when a month after that, the last package would bid.
Okay.
So he's got, what, three months to spare because we have to get that done this year.
Right. And we desperately need it in a couple of these canals that, they are really overgrown.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. We did do the regular motion, didn't we? Just making sure. We talk so much, housekeeping and.
I'm watching.
Yeah, y'all watch me. Four C.
Special Ordinance Number 2023, 2024, 31, and ordinance amending the budget for street paving slash pepper flex audit adjustments.
These are some more of our audit adjustments, moving money around. I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. Is anyone here to speak on this item from the public? Hearing, seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marla Lewis and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Now we're on to the main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Marla Lewis. Is there any discussion on the main motion?
So we're just moving the money around to cover this?
This is money that we're moving, this is audit requirements, and this is just putting things where they go.
Right.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
You close it out? You didn't close it out.
Ma'am?
Yes, we did.
Well, you did, okay.
Yes, we did.
I think I did, yeah.
Yeah, you did, sorry. I was thinking we were on the.
No problem, keep watching me, I'll, I'll mess up before it's over with. Hey, hey, no, no comments there, Madam Clerk. Five A.
Resolution Number 2489, a resolution appointing Karen Bechet as a member of the municipal government employees Civil Service Board to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Angelique Narcisse, whose term expires March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Greater, Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce.
I need a motion.
Second.
Councilman Marla Lewis, and I think this time it was Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion? Are you here?
Yes, I am.
I thought so, why don't you come on up? I knew that was you, but we, we have a requirement that when we put somebody on a board, they need to be here and, anybody have, you want to make a little statement?
Good evening, I'm Karen Bechet, retired administrator, Iberia Parish School Board, thirty-six years, principal of a school for, Laurville High School for about sixteen years. Prior to that, I was an accounting supervisor and private industry for an oil company. Lots of experience with hiring practices and procedures and employee issues and such that. I currently am in a volunteer capacity at the Great Iberia Chamber of Commerce, also the Bayou Teche Museum, and just a time where I'm willing to give, also my church, and a time where I'm willing to give back to the community.
Cool, we can't ask for better than that.
You can't ask for better than that.
Be running for office.
Yeah.
I'm picking on you, but.
I got some challenges.
Thank you, we, we, this is a very important position, and they're not always easy to fill. So the fact that you want to come and volunteer for that, that's, that's great. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I'd like to thank a person they found. Helping my son, David Broussard Jr., you did a real good job training him for being a principal.
He's, he's, he's gonna be fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to thank Mrs. Karen and her husband, Mr. Kenneth Bechet, for allowing her to serve. Thank you for volunteering. I know, I mean, y'all married, y'all retired, I mean, I mean, he could be like, let's stay home and plant flowers.
That's why you're not married.
But he's like, no, go get your work and, you know, the community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Bechet, thank you very much. We really appreciate you joining this board. I think the employees are gonna be really excited to see that you're gonna be part of the board, and we just appreciate anybody who wants to come and serve. So thank you again for coming and welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I did, thanks again, Ms. Bechet, and, and I really think the future of the city is with our city employees, because that's the bread and butter, and, and you're gonna have a dramatic impact on, on those people's lives, and look forward to working with you, and best of luck, really do.
Thank you, look forward to it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bechet and I go way back to childhood at the same church. So I know her personally and have been knowing her for many, many, many years. And I know she's gonna do a great job, and I'm glad, I'm very happy that you stepped up because sometimes we have issues getting qualified people to, to serve. And since you have stepped in to this position, and you know we're gonna vote for you, you know, hopefully, you know, you'll encourage other people to do the same because we do have a lot of openings, and we need people like yourself to, to fill those positions, and welcome.
Glad to be of service.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you don't need a resume. I mean, this is being with the chamber, teaching our kids, makes me feel kind of bad about what I do, you know? But.
I'm glad you didn't qualify for mayor.
Yeah. But volunteering is something that I think people don't appreciate. We get up there and we do get paid a little bit, and we love this community. But to do it and to represent employees and for their benefits, you can't put a price on it, you know? Thank you so much because we, we can't do that, and you need people to represent them because the law is the law, but they need someone to stand up for the law and for themselves. And someone like you is just a win-win for not only them, but for us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Indeed, that's my church members, I was just messing with them, so. I saw your face.
That's not, that's not good enough, but okay. We'll talk about that after the meeting.
I saw your face.
It's fine.
Oh, no, no, we gotta put Marla in this place.
Marla, I'm gonna save you, I'm gonna call for the vote. Please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Five B.
Resolution Number 2490, a resolution awarding contract to Preferred Electric Incorporated for the Simon Theater New Art Track Lights Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is the new festival that is the Plan Air Festival that The Shadows hosted for ten years, and the city has taken over it. It will be held at the Simon, we're making a few minor improvements to host them. It's a really kind of special deal that seventy-five artists get selected every year from around, well, seventy-five apply, twenty-five get selected from around the country. So we have artists that have been coming here for ten years from around the United States. It's pretty much self-funds itself. As The Shadows did before, we will get a percentage of the art sales, and at the end of the day, it seems to all work out that it, it pays for itself or comes very close to. We didn't want to lose it, I mean, I got friends there, but there was big talk about it going to Lafayette. So when The Shadows and the Plan Air Board kind of weren't, it just didn't really fit kind of everybody's mission. So we were approached, and, and I think it's good to save that and to keep it here and to hopefully nurture it and let it grow. So David, tell us what we're doing.
We need a motion.
Oh, wait, I will need a motion, but he can tell us about it.
The project consists of two rows of track lighting about ten feet off of the brick walls, so that will help to provide sort of a balanced illumination. And then there's gonna be about sixteen head fixtures attached to the tracks. And we've already scoped out the location, how to access their wiring, all those kind of things.
And they'll be on dimmers.
They'll be on dimmers, and they're suitable for this festival's event with the lighting coloration and things like that.
It also helps because we do get a lot of complaints that the Simon is dark.
Yeah.
And depending on the event, you know, if it's a nighttime fundraiser, that kind of thing, it works well. But that building is used for all multipurpose, all kind of functions. And there is a lot of times that we had been considering adding some additional lighting, so I think this is gonna be a win-win.
So Mayor, the lighting is gonna be on the ceiling, correct?
Yeah, well, it, it hangs down from the ceiling.
The ceiling, about, tracks are gonna be about fourteen feet.
So the pictures or anything that's gonna be on the wall, you have to be through that old brick, right?
The, no, sir, because we didn't want to do that.
That's right.
And the next item is some, is one of, we'll have to buy more if it works. We're building one, but the next item is the rack that's gonna hold the paintings.
For one painting?
No, sir, we're buying one rack, okay?
Okay.
And being wise about it, and then getting the Plan Air artists there, or at least the board, hanging some art with our new lights, making sure it works, and then we'll buy the rest of it. hanging some art with our new lights, making sure it works, and then we'll buy the rest of it. But it's a, it's a no-win proposition to try to hang them on the bricks.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Sure.
You said that we get a percentage of the proceeds in sale of the painting. Do we know what we're gonna do with that money?
That's gonna go back to pay back the expenses for the Plan Air every year. If we build up enough, we'd probably do a little endowment for the Plan Air so that we'd make sure that if they had an off year, we still, it's still in the end paid for itself. So what we're doing is we're fronting the money on the front end. They sell the paintings. We get our percentage back to pay us back. And it looks like they'll actually, I'm not, you know, you knock on something. It looks like they do a little better than most years than paying for themselves. So if we have a few thousand dollars left, my idea is we put it in an endowment for the Plan Air, because what if they have an off year? What if you have a year that, I mean, it didn't happen. The only time it didn't happen was during COVID. But what if you had a year that there was a downturn in the economy that, you know, those paintings didn't sell? I would like to protect us that it's a wonderful little festival, and I'd like to see it grow. But at the same time, I would like it not to lose money.
Okay. If we decide one day that we want to use the money for something else, is it possible to use it for a youth program doing something very similar?
We might be able to talk to them and say, help us do that. I mean, I think there's possibilities. Yeah, yeah. I'm always open to possibilities.
This would be a great way to get the next generation involved.
Well, we'd like to introduce more kids to art, and that is something that, you know, we're applying for a grant for an art center now in the West End, so we're on the same page. So I'm not gonna say no. So let's just say, let's succeed first and then figure it out.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Just want to plant the seed.
No, that's all. Seed planted. Then let's.
So, um.
Hang on, Dan, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Ledbetter had a comment.
So Mayor, you saying that the lights and the things to, that you're gonna put up to hold the paintings are gonna come from the proceeds?
Not this year. This year, it's, the lighting is eighteen thousand dollars, if I remember right, or?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve. The lighting is twelve thousand dollars.
But we're gonna pay ourselves off before we talk about spending the money on something else? You know?
Break even.
Yeah, break and even?
Well, I'm hoping that we do break even. I'm not positive this first year if we will, because we are, I know every year when you sell the paintings, the money breaks it even. Am I positive I'm gonna get the whole twelve thousand dollars back? No, ma'am, I'm not.
Okay.
Still a great investment for the, the community.
I mean, and then it helps the Simon that we all do, so it, it does some good. But that's a good question. I mean, that's a fair question. So maybe, ma'am.
Maybe.
Yes, ma'am.
Fingers crossed.
Anybody else? Then let's clean our house keeping up, because we got excited about it. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed. If there's nothing further, please vote your machines. Thank you. Hang up there, Dave. Madam Clerk, five C.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-one, a resolution awarding contract to Byron's Cabinets and Woodworks for the Simon Theater New Art Displays Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Second.
Who is the motion? Councilman Dan Dahl? I barely heard it. And Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now I'm open for discussion. David, you want to tell us about it?
Yeah, so recommendation is for one art display, as the mayor was saying. We wanted to build a prototype and have the festival organizers review it before actually building, you know, I think we're looking at maybe about sixteen of them. So this item is a display. It's four feet wide and about eight feet tall. It is double-sided and in an A-frame configuration with three levels of art, uh, three rows of art displays that are possible per side. And we've got the idea from other Plan Air Festival events. It's also foldable, so it can be collapsed. It's lightweight. It could be moved into an area and stored backstage and then brought out as needed with probably just two people, so.
Or brought somewhere else. Excuse me, Dave. Or brought somewhere else to do some other art project.
Exactly.
Anyway, yeah, it's really flexible. It's not like a large movable wall system you would see at a museum. That's cumbersome. This is gonna be really easy to move around. And it's all built out of wood, so we keep the cost down, and kind of adds a warm feeling with the art, so.
Questions, comments? We kind of kicked it all around the first time. Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. Hey, one more. Oh, that's true.
Five D.
Five D.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-two, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the City Park and West End Community Centers improvements. FPNC Project Number Fifty ML One Twenty O Two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, David, tell us about it.
So this is a substantial completion for the roof repair work at the two community centers, at the parks. And the contractor has completed most of the work, and there's a few little items remaining on the project. And so we've reached substantial completion.
Questions, comments?
This is just roof work.
Yes.
I think there was, there was the additional work that, at both gyms and the interior, the paintings.
Some pain.
But I think we had already done that as a substantial completion.
We did a while back.
Okay.
So we could get them paid, because the roof was taking longer. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
So can I ask David something before he sits down?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, who put, who installed the lights in Weston Park?
That was this contractor.
Okay, because I was out there a week or so ago, and one of the lights looked like it's fallen over.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I have a picture of it. I can send it to you. I'll text it to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
We still got their punch list. I mean, we still got their retainment, you know. And it's still under warranty.
So those are the kind of things that we want to bring to our attention, so we can notify the contractor. We don't know unless someone tells us, you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I was walking through the park, and so I'm always taking pictures when things don't look like they're supposed to look.
I'll send an email right as I leave.
Okay, cool. I'll send it to you.
All right, thanks.
Madam Clerk, five E.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-three, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act Project entitled Drainage Cleanout, Area A, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollar canal cleanout from ARPA money. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis, is there any discussion on this? Kind of talked about the drainage project a minute ago. If there is none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Five F.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-four, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a community infrastructure grant application through Delta Regional Authority for wastewater system improvements.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed, and I think maybe Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, is second. This is a grant we're writing, and so as usual, parts of grants, you have to get, you know, council approval that you know I'm applying for a grant. This is through Delta Regional Authority, and it is all pertaining to our wastewater system. We are looking for other ways and other avenues, as you know, because you helped me make that decision. We didn't take the five million from the state, because we didn't want to go up on sewer user fees. So we just have to get a little more aggressive and creative in how we continue to attack our sewer issues.
And I was in a session at LMA last week, and it was with the lady who kind of handles all those grants. Yeah, I think that's her name. And she said that if we apply for the grant again for the wastewater, we have to go up on the user fees. So we, they're probably not gonna be an option.
That's for the state.
Yeah, the state. This is the state, yeah.
Well, that's why we're going to Delta Regional Authority and a whole lot of other people, because I really, I have strong reservations about, you know, going up. When you compare us to other communities, we are, we are right in the middle. We're not overcharging anybody.
Right.
When you ask anybody at Lowe's or Walmart or anywhere else you see them, that is something that is a big bone of contention, is how much that costs. So I'm willing to look for other avenues, because I do know that that's why we turned it down. If we go back to the state, they have requirements of a sustainability factor that is really high. And to meet that, it, it's gonna really hurt. So I think for now, we have some money for sewer. We're not, you know, we have a lot of challenges. So I think the wise choice for now, we might have to one day, but the wise choice for now is to exercise and go after every other option before we burden our citizens with, you know, a higher cost.
Yeah, there's some smaller communities that don't have a choice, and so they're now trying to figure out ways.
Some of them started spending the money before they knew that there was a hook.
There was a hook.
Because we waited, because they said, this is too good to be true. Well, it ended up being a little bit too good to be true. But some communities just started spending money, and they in a bond now.
Yeah, now they're trying to find ways to help supplement the income of their residents so that they can actually pay this new user fee. So it's, it's tough.
No, it is. It is.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You might remember, I was on council when we got that sewer plant bill.
Mr.?
Because if we didn't do it, the state was gonna take over, and we implement, we implemented sewer user fee.
Yeah.
That's how far back I was here.
That was a consent decree, I mean.
Yeah, and it was, it was bad. So at that time, we spent all the money instead of spending on the roads and that. We couldn't, because we had to do that because of decree we were under. And we took a lot of heat, because we could not spend in nowhere else. And even though we can control the sewer user fee, we can't control the water bill. To a point, when they go to the state and they get approved from Public Service Committee, we can't control that.
Oh, no, we have nothing to do with that.
So when the water bill goes up, of course, the sewer user fee is attached to that.
Yes.
We do not control the water bill. People still think we can. They go to Public Service Commission, and they get the approval. We only control the sewer user fee. And I want to thank you, because that is a big deal.
It is.
And we're doing everything. We had an opportunity to get a lot of free dollars at the cost of the citizens. And this council, and especially the mayor, decided not to take this money. And I want to applaud you for that, because it was hard to turn it down.
It, it has been a struggle once we turn it, because, because the sewer issues aren't going away.
Yeah.
You know, the sewer issues aren't going away.
But people just don't understand how much, how hard it is sometimes to turn down money. But there's always something attached to it. And, and.
There is, sir.
And we did the right thing. People sometimes appreciate it.
And look, I applied for it twice. We applied one year, and I didn't get it, and I was all jacked.
Yeah.
Well, the second year, we got it, and then when it came with that big hook, I had to say no. So, yeah, it's been a roller coaster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tell us about the hook.
It wasn't there.
I know.
Well.
Sounds like you said, even if we just apply, just for applying?
No, 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 no. When you receive the grant.
Only if we receive it.
Yeah, when you get the grant, you have to go up on the user fees. And the lady was like, they're adamant about that.
Right.
There is no way around that requirement.
And that's why we're shopping elsewhere.
Yeah. However, once again, my little infomercial, when it's time to vote for a public service commissioner, please vote. Don't get me started on them.
Yeah, that's, we, we've had many, many conversations about that.
Exactly.
Anybody else? Okay, we had a motion, we got a second. I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five G.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-five, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a Louisiana Office of Tourism Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Five Competitive Grant, CGP, in reference to the Tesh Plan Air City of New Iberia.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second, who was the second? Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed. And as you see, I always got Plan A and B. I don't say always work, okay? But you gotta give me the credit. I have a Plan A and a Plan B. We are applying for a grant, because we saw a grant for Plan Air, and if we're gonna take something on, let's, let's try to hedge our bet.
Right.
So since we said yes to do it, now I'm trying for a grant, with the help of Jane, of course. But that's, you know, we try every avenue. Any questions or comments?
It's the reason why I asked about the money, because I remember seeing the part about the grant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One step at a time. You know, you gotta spend it, and, because we need to make this happen at the flip side. Why not hedge our bet? Now, if there's nothing further, please vote your machines. Thank you. Five H.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute cooperative endeavor agreements by and between the Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the City of New Iberia related to Act Seven Seventy-Six of Twenty Twenty-Four.
This is two items combined into one. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the police department that is going toward our crime camera system, and it is seventy-five thousand dollars that is split in half between GPAL and Yab Tabab, which is a local organization made up of a few groups. But that's what this is, and this is the first step of many steps to get that money coming. With that, I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed, and is there any discussion on this item?
So did you? When I read this, it, it reads different.
Tell me more.
Which one? You probably think what I'm thinking.
Well, look, look at how it's, it's written. Sorry.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's. Okay, that's why I asked the question before the meeting.
It's two fifty for the NIPD.
No, no, but that's not what this says, so let's be careful before we vote on this.
Whoa, hang on.
It doesn't say that. That's why I asked before the meeting. But I'm like, okay, I know I, I read this correctly.
Yeah, you did.
We got it backwards.
Exactly.
Oh, well, we need to.
I was gonna bring it up, but you, you were on it first.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't think this written, this is written correctly.
I already wrote it down.
Okay, cool.
I got it.
So should we amend the motion?
We're not voting till we amend it. I would like to amend that.
All right.
And basically, what's going on is the, it's transposed, and we need to correct that Teen Court Youth Services Youth Engagement is seventy-five thousand, and that the NIPD for its crime center is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So thank you for catching that. I hadn't seen it. I look at everything, but I didn't catch that.
I had marked it, but I said DeeDee's on it.
Well, I, that's why I asked the question early, because I'm thinking, this doesn't make sense.
Well, I gotta follow the state agreement, so we would have got the state agreement.
Yeah.
It would have told us what we had to do, but still.
But then we'd have to bring it back, right?
We'd have to bring it back.
I'll make the motion as corrective language, as, as edited by the mayor, if a clerk has that on file.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I have a motion to correct, and I need a second.
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 No, second. Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine.
You have no glasses. You have no glasses.
I'll give it to Councilman.
I went through my face.
I'll give it to Councilman Dan Dahl this time, because he was first. Even though it's pretty impressive that she read all that with no glasses.
Well, I read it earlier.
Is there, when she had glasses. Is there any discussion on, on this corrective?
I wrote my question here.
Then I'd ask you to vote your machines on this.
And we're voting on the correction.
On the correction.
Okay.
And we'll go back to the motion. That's the right way to do it. Thank you. Now we have a corrected motion.
I'll move on that.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis, is there any discussion on the corrected motion? We're now back where we needed to be.
We voted on the corrected motion with amended language in it.
Right. And now we're voting on this motion, the new motion.
Okay.
Everybody's cool with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then let it rip. Vote your machines.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. Good catch. It would have worked out in the end, but.
Why y'all didn't vote?
That's what I said. I pressed it and didn't.
That's all right. I pressed my, I did the same thing.
I'm looking at you and then looking at mine.
He's messing with Councilman Lewis.
All right, moving on.
Clean your house first.
Five I.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the Garren Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation and the City of New Iberia related to Act Seven Seventy-Six of Twenty Twenty-Four.
We need an amended motion again.
Yeah, we need an amended again.
Yep. We know what we're doing on both of these, because we'll need an amended motion on the next one as well.
Yes.
So let's just get started. Does someone want to make the amended motion to correct the dollar amount?
We correct the amendment before we vote on the other one?
Okay.
With the right amounts.
Which would be seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Divided, you know.
My second emotion.
Just, just have this one reflect Resolution Twenty-four Ninety-Six as amended.
Yeah. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. And so we know what we're doing now. It's seventy-five thousand. Any questions on this? Then please vote your machines. Here's up. Okay, now for the new motion. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Marlon Lewis, any discussion on this?
Are we on the next one?
No, we're on the first one.
Oh, okay, I'm about to say.
Move to do the first one. So if we don't have any questions on this, we vote, we're finished with GPAL, we move on. Any questions or comments? Machines cleared. Vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Now we go to five J. We got the same circus. So do I have a motion to correct, and this, the dollar value will be?
Motion to amend.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a motion to amend by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Any discussion on this amendment? Seeing and hearing no discussion on the amendment, please vote your machines. Thank you. Now I need a motion on the new corrected motion.
I make a motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed, and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, and this, remember what we're voting on. This is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Could we change to seventy-five? Correct?
Yes. Okay. Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Okay.
Two organizations might say, why don't you keep your big mouth shut?
Well, it, it wouldn't have panned out in the end, but it's better to have. I would've had to bring it back. We would've had a delay, so that's all good stuff.
Yeah, I'm just playing.
None of us are perfect. All right, now we on to five K.
Resolution number twenty-four ninety-nine, a resolution amending the administrative process for the Business Development Grant, American Rescue Plan Act Project.
This one, just to tell you, we have a hundred and forty-nine thou- and five hundred.
Yes.
One forty-nine, five hundred is our dollar amount. So, let's get this out the way, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. And this is where we are trying to, for the next few, we've become a little bit of a talk show, but we are trying to get our final rulings down for all of this ARPA money that we're spending, so that we can get it out in the community. We are taking applications, things are happening, but we have a few things to tweak, cause as this process is going on, we're learning as we go, and we're seeing things that we need to loosen up or need to do to, to make it a little more attractive.
So, basically, what the mayor's saying is that if you haven't applied, please come and apply. You only have a couple more days.
How many applications?
Can we, can we move the?
One at a time. No, I'm just getting bombarded by.
Dee Dee still got the phone.
Yeah, Dee Dee still got it.
I'm done.
Okay.
And I just wanna know, how many applications we had in and, and the date? I was gonna ask like Marle, the date's creeping up on us.
Yes, I might, well, how many do we have? We have eight applications for the Business Development Grant, so we still have a few open. I, depending on. Right, and we're not sure who's eligible yet, we just have eight. What our plan is, is to take all the applications, then we're gonna convene and see who's eligible or not, and then do it publicly after that. Some of the ones that might get told that they don't, uh, meet the bill. The other thing I'm looking at, that we are amending all four of our programs tonight, so I, I might need to extend the time.
Right.
We, we need to do it, but one of them is so drastic and really good that we're changing and allowing something new. I definitely know on one block at a time, we're gonna need to extend it. But on all of these, we might just do a small extension, just because we getting the word out. We also are putting together, that's gonna happen, I think next week, I got a video we're doing that will help to promote this. I'm not gonna get into all the details, but just to let people know, hey, you know, please check this out, come by, come by City Hall or look on Facebook, uh, just because we're gonna try to make sure we reach as many people as we can, uh, in our community. But one step at a time, so for tonight, we have eight, we haven't gone through them yet, and our deadline was the ninth.
Yep.
And we might be extending it, depending on how drastically we change each one across.
So, we're not gonna make that decision tonight whether or not we extend at least a week.
Well, we're gonna talk about it, and if you, if we, if we think we can, like, I think on one block at a time, we're all gonna agree to extend it, so why waste time? In other words, if we know we're gonna extend it, then after we get to that item and discuss it.
No, I'm talking about the business grants, I mean, can we make a decision now to extend?
You're gonna let me, yeah, yeah, in other words, let's talk about it, if you'd like the changes. Then, uh.
Well, and I know I handed out more than eight, so I'm like wondering, where are my people? Why they didn't bring this back to the, uh, City Hall?
I'm sure they will.
You know what I noticed?
Sir?
I noticed that the few I handed out, they didn't have occupational license.
Yeah.
And so, I said, you know, they can apply for it and.
I can fix that, okay?
There's, there's a gray area in there now.
Yeah, but that's not the end of the world, okay? If it's just occupational license, I will say, guess what? You buy, I'm giving you the grant, you buying occupational license, so.
Exactly.
But that's what, that's why we're doing this tonight.
Yes.
In other words, you will have to have an occupational license before we give you the money.
But you're gonna disqualify.
But I'm not gonna disqualify you because you don't have occupational license, but that's one that has been a, a sticking point. So, that's on my list to talk about tonight, to say, I can remedy that. You gonna get one, but, you know, I don't wanna throw you out because you don't.
Exactly.
One of the other ones was, we had that you would be in good standing with the state. Well, there's all kind of reasons you could not be in good standing with the state. You might have an LLC, you're not even using it anymore, and you switched to a sole proprietor, and you're still on the records, if you look it up, that you had a LLC that's not in good standing. Well, the more we talked about it, it's not my business to handle the state, it's my business to handle the city. Same as y'all. So, I'm willing to waive that. I think that it's gonna open up to more people, because, you know, I interviewed a couple of people myself, and they were all gun ho, and they were a great little family business, a little sole proprietorship. I looked him up, and I said, dude, why do you have this? Well, after he explained it to me, well, we quit using that LLC fifteen years ago.
Right.
So, he never paid that fee or did the update, so he's still on the books. And this guy's operating a really good business, I ate out of it the other day. So, with that, I'm thinking, we don't need to do that.
No, a sole proprietorship doesn't need a register, so.
Right.
Right, so that's two changes definitely that would help open it up.
Also, I thought we had made the decision the last time, but I see it still on the list about they must agree to provide services to some low or moderate income individuals. I thought we had scratched that.
No, cause we, we have to have that in there, we.
No, cause we, what we said was, if the person's low income, why do they have to be providing services to low income people? They could be providing services, maybe I'm a, I, I'm a contractor and I provide services to lawyers. I'm a, a legal secretary and I do contract work. I'm, I'm low income, cause they don't wanna pay me, right? But I'm providing this service to lawyers. So, they don't necessarily low income people, but it's still my business. It just seems like that, somebody in that circle needs to be low income, but it could be the person who's providing the service themselves.
I think you have to agree that you will not exclude. I think you at lea- you at least have to say that I will provide to.
Well, you're not excluding what I'm, what I'm saying.
Ah, but I mean, I'm just saying.
Okay.
I think you have to at least, whoa, I think you at least have to put in there that you will, you will agree to.
So, we just want them to write a statement saying, oh, if a low income person comes to me, I will provide a service.
It's gonna be in our rules, like the rest of them.
I just.
I got no problem modifying that, but at the same time, I think that by the state constitution and by the reason, cause it's very weird that the city's giving away this money. I don't, respectfully, I disagree a little bit. Because we're giving this money away that we normally can't do, cause not only do we have to follow the ARPA rules, we have to follow the state constitution rules, and I sound like our attorney. He teaches me well, but I feel that we need to leave something in there that says, we're not gonna not provide services to.
No, I agree.
To low income. I gotta have something in there that to me protects us.
Okay, so.
Let's ask our city attorney.
We've had this discussion already, and I, I thought we said it's an are, not an and. But, okay, I'm gonna let.
That's a separate issue. That's a separate issue. Now you're or anding too much.
Okay, all right. I think, I think what we're talking about is, we can benefit low income people directly, or we can benefit low income people indirectly.
Right.
But we have to benefit low income people.
Correct.
So, what the councilwoman's saying is, you could benefit a low income person directly, even if that person only works for rich folks.
Exactly. What about a cleaning service?
Just, all we gotta do is put in there that we won't refuse.
Right.
We won't refuse, you can put it in there in another way, that we will not refuse.
Okay, when, when people read these rules, and the reason why I'm saying is, when they read these rules and they say, you must. Must means that there's no wiggle room. So, that's what I'm trying to get you guys to understand.
Well, if you say you will not refuse service to low to moderate income individuals, I didn't say that, Dave.
Okay, but then.
There's another way to work.
When I get this application and these are the rules, I'm thinking I don't qualify.
That's why we, we're here redoing the rule.
That's what I'm trying to get us to focus on that one, too.
I think we are.
Okay.
I think you could do it either way.
Yeah, I think either way works.
I've never voted in twenty years.
Okay, you wanna vote?
I'm not gonna tell you. You know, I, I don't, I don't decide what y'all do, I just try to explain to you what your options.
You keep us between the ditches.
So, yeah, and I think if you, if you benefiting a needy person who provides a service to anybody, or if you benefiting people who provide services to needy people, I think either way, we could justify doing this. But, how you do it is up to the people who vote.
Thank you.
No, I'm not disagreeing with.
I love you.
No, I know you are, I know you're agreeing with me, that my point is valid.
I know you're agreeing with me.
But irregardless of how you.
I'm sorry, y'all. I'm just, I'm just having fun.
You just lost to mess with me.
Either way it works.
Yes, right.
You're really on the same page.
I know, I just want, I, I, I think that when we hand this out, we're gonna make, people are. Right, people are saying, okay, I don't qualify because that's not what I'm doing. So, what I'm trying to do is just soften the language so that people don't feel like they don't qualify for this opportunity. And that was my point the last time we had this discussion, to soften the language.
Either way you put it, it means you go, you include the vote together, it means to go that you.
It really does, either way.
I feel like, for the, for the layperson who's reading this, they're gonna think that they don't qualify. I'm just saying soften the language so that people don't feel like they don't qualify. When you say must, must means no wiggle room. So, I'm just saying, let's take that word out, let's use a different word.
That's worse.
Whatever, you know, I just, must is a, is too strong of language. Okay.
Every attempt must be made to service low to moderate income individuals. Boom, done.
Say that again?
I think you can find ten different ways to skin it, yeah.
I know, but, okay, all right.
Help me word it right now. Cause I really wanna, I really wanna get all of these done tonight. So that we can, we can roll.
You could say the business does not exclude providing services. But what you, what you're not saying is that you must provide.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, it's on the list to take the must out.
Okay, all right.
Or, or, okay, give us another one.
Or, you could say the business owner must be low to moderate income, or must agree to provide services to low to moderate income.
Exactly, that's it.
Okay, and then we have two Rs and not an and.
That's why.
You got.
No, and, we don't want and, we want the R.
So, you got, so you have two ways.
And the and.
And we have two Rs.
Right, but that's what we were trying to do the last time, that's what I was.
So, two ways to qualify.
Make them watch that video again.
Two ways to qualify.
So, we're there, we got, exactly, that's the perfect language right there. You see, that's why we have a lawyer in the room.
That's why we have Jeff. All right, then that's what we're gonna do, you agree with that one?
I agree. I agree one hundred percent.
Government at work, everybody else agrees, because it's not just Dee Dee and I in the room.
I know, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't, I don't want a low income cop gonna come to my house. I mean, I don't, if he come in there with a hammer and a
OK.
A screwdriver, then. I'm just saying. If you're doing, if you, if, I'm just saying, y'all, I be listening, and I'm like.
This says he must provide, it doesn't say you have to hire.
Exactly.
So, I would just tell them, you know what I've been telling people? Just fill out the application, and we'll work it out, that's what I've been telling them. Fill out the application, we only got ap- eight applications.
But for the people who came and picked this up and they just read this, this is, this language is too strong. We're just correcting that.
You know why I tell them, fill out the application? Cause I knew we was gonna be doing this, cause of the discussions we had. I knew we was gonna be doing this.
We have been talking behind the scenes.
That's what I tell them, fill out the application and get it in, and then we'll loosen it up when they get here, that's what I've been telling them. Cause I knew we was gonna do this.
Okay, but the fact that we only have eight, maybe they didn't believe you.
Well, no, we, we loosening it up right now.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so hopefully that's gonna make more people feel comfortable filling out the paperwork and bringing it in, because there's a chance they still could get access to the grant.
Yeah. How long you wanna stay low income and be self-employed?
No, we're keeping the must, they must be low to moderate income, or agree to provide services to.
Thank you.
Okay, so the one other one we have to correct. Mister and or, which.
You already have that one.
The business must have decreased revenue or gross recei.
Or being a low to moderate income.
Or, or being a low to moderate.
Because, cause the, yeah, because the language talks about people, it's presumed they qualify if they're in the census tract.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, so that's the other one.
That's the other one.
That was the other one.
That was the strongest one that we hadn't got to yet, but.
Yeah.
Remember I said it was gonna be hard getting people, you remember that? That's what I hopped on. And I said, oh, no, they gonna come running in, no, they not.
Well, you were right, they did.
We dealt with this already, people don't.
Yeah.
And, 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 cause they just don't, they think it's too much paper. People don't want you in their business, you can give them, they don't want you in their business. So, you gotta find, this thing gotta point to, we not get, this is what this thing gotta say. We not getting in your business, we wanna make your business better, that's what it gotta say.
Or you fill it out for them, that's what they want, you know?
Okay, I don't disagree, and that's why we're back doing this, that's why we're probably gonna extend the time a little bit. We're gonna go through all four of them tonight and, uh.
Dee Dee know that, even with the housing, the first thing they, with the airship affidavit, they don't wanna sign airship affidavit, why? They don't wanna amend their business.
But. Hopefully the people that actually interest.
That letting them know we trying to help you, we not getting your business.
That's a good point, Marle.
Yes, sir.
So, if you, if I'm doing this right, there's eight applications, and just say we not eliminating anybody, that's fifty-six thousand, you got a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so we got a ways to go for an application, that's correct. You said a few left, I said, man, we got a lot of money left.
We do, we do, that's why I wanna extend it.
On, on the, on the language with the census tract. You know, if you look at the census tract, so is the census tract or had a significant loss during the COVID event, correct? So, that's how, that's how.
Yes.
Documented loss, or you're in the census tract.
In the census tract.
Yes.
Or.
Or.
We got rid of the and.
The adjective word is or.
And was two meetings ago.
That's why I'm saying, cause if it would say and or, it'd be different.
It was different.
It was, that's why we got rid of that last time, but now we gotta.
Okay, just wanna clear that.
The or is even bigger.
Yeah, so that's.
Capital or.
Yeah, I'm gonna put capital Rs on all this, um, but, yeah. So, this gives us our Business Development Grant where I think it needs to be. And, uh, that's the whole point of this.
So, we can, starting tomorrow, we can go back and publicize this to our, our community.
And how about deadline?
And what's the deadline? First of all, okay, yeah, we're not finished. We've got the language now where we want. I think we should kick the deadline. We need to have this wrapped up by the end of the year, okay? So, I'm open to suggestions of how long you think we should kick it? Cause basically, we're gonna end up kicking the deadline of all four of them, and just keep them all the same. So, do we want or another?
I'm saying sixty days.
I don't think we.
Thirty is thirty.
I think thirty.
I said it quicker.
I was thinking thirty. I was thinking like two or three weeks, look, this is the deal.
Sixty, we gonna.
By, at least by the last Monday in the month, they need to be turned in. That gives them, what, three weeks?
Where we at right now, August, uh?
We're August sixth.
Sixth, yeah.
Yeah, because what you have to understand, once we, then we go through them, then we're gonna convene at the Slime and, and kinda go through all this and get people to come. And then, once we do that, then we have to, this one, then we gotta enter into contracts with each one. We don't have to spend the money immediately, but I gotta have contracts by the end of the year.
So they have to sign.
You multiply this times twenty people for this, fifty people for that, forty people for that, it's a whole lot of stuff. Well, okay, so two or three weeks to me would be.
Yeah.
In a month.
Because again, they've already had thirty days.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna extend it maybe another two to three weeks. That should be enough, because we go out there and you're gonna do a video and we push it out to our community. We should get more people coming.
I'm just saying, would, would, would thirty days hurt?
Yes.
Would it hurt?
It would.
It would hurt?
Yeah, because we have other things we have to do.
Cause I know she do, gotta do the work. It'll hurt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
So what are we agreeing on, three weeks?
Twenty-third, when's that? What's, how many weeks is twenty-third?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
That's a Friday.
That to me.
Compromise.
That's good, I'm good with that.
All right, let's, can we vote on that? We about to.
Right, I got one more question.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, I've had a couple of questions of, when I give them applications, can we go to City Hall and, and ask questions of how to fill out that? Or is there a specific contact person?
Yeah, they could.
I mean, I mean, I wanna, I don't wanna tell them to go ju-
They come in, I don't know that we getting them all back, but they come in every day. I mean, people are coming every day, Amber's helping them at the window.
So, okay, so we get some of your?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, the whole point is just to help people.
Oh, I know, but I'm just.
That's, that's what I've been doing to them, bring it to City Hall and if you got any questions, ask them.
I mean, I hear them all day long with questions, so I'm a little surprised we don't have more back, because we have a lot of people coming, so.
Right. And the deadline was Friday, so they probably were gonna rush in on Friday.
Question, oh, what happens, uh, if we don't spend all the money? We don't have enough grants, you know, I mean, you know?
We have to move on, so in each category, if we would have some money left, then I'm gonna come back to y'all and we're gonna figure out if we're gonna extend, do it again, if we're going to try something else. Uh, but, I mean, I don't wanna change the, what we agreed to from the beginning, because it's such a balanced plan. So my hope was, we fill it all. If we don't, then I say we come back and we might have to say.
We're gonna scramble.
We'll reallocate the money. Can't we reallocate it to some other project? That benefits low to in, uh, low to moderate income people?
Yeah, or, or we could take it from one and say.
Can we up it? From seven thousand to ten? If there's less applicants?
I mean, I guess you could give, you could divide the money and say that's all the applicants we have, and they each get seven hundred dollars more, however the math works, that's, that's an option.
Right.
If we wanted to say, well, let's kick that money to one block at a time, cause it has more.
Exactly.
Or let's kick it to, let's stay within the param, if, if it's okay with y'all, not to unbalance the plan, cause we spent months and months on that years ago and said, this is the most balanced plan that does through the whole community as evenly as we could, every kind of interest. So let's just say within these four categories, if we either, our choice is to allocate a little more and be done with it, or move it to one of the other three. Because they're all doing really good stuff. But that way, it stays in the focus of the master plan.
Exactly, I mean.
So if that's okay with y'all, then let's just be a little flexible and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, we have money left over, one block at a time, we probably could use the money there, cause I, I suspect we're gonna start getting way more applications than we've already received after tonight.
With the new changes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a way to do it, and then again, I'm just protective of what we, what we did with the plan originally, because it worked so well that nobody has ever fussed about this side of town, or this kinda interest, or whatever, we really did, and thank all y'all for that, but we really did a really balanced plan. Cause I don't see anybody else doing anything crazy like all of this. I love every minute of it, but most people spent it on sewer, water, and, you know, infrastructure. We, we, we elected not to do that. It's fun. Anybody else on the business grants, can we put that one to bed and?
So August twenty-third would be the new deadline?
Yes, for all three, all, all four.
Okay.
No? Oh, that's true, two of them, we don't need them.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions or comments, please vote your machines? And then Madam Clerk will make the changes and we'll get this rolling. Good, okay, five, uh.
L.
L.
Resolution number twenty-four dash one hundred, a resolution amending the administrative process for the one block at a time home repairs for seniors, low income and disabled communities, American Rescue Plan Act project.
Okay, the two big changes that, well, let's do the motion first, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Repro Timur Kigonsalan and Councilman Martin Lewis. My two big changes are, I'm backing up, okay? Sometimes you gotta back up in this job, all right? That's why I gotta reverse. We are and have decided we're gonna do roofs, which should open it up to a whole lot of people. Many, many people I talk to in our community are like, what you doing with handicap ramps and shutters and landscaping and painting and minor amount of carpentry is good, but my roof's shot.
Yep.
So you putting lipstick on a pig, you know, I mean, I gotta live in the house and I still have a roof leak. We had a lot of liability questions and a whole, and jumped a lot of hoops with our insurance company, with, we've had to do quite a few things to be able to approve roofs, because there is a liability factor with roofs. Our cover, our carriers are fine, we, we worked it all out. Councilman Reed and Councilman Lewis approached me after a meeting, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter, everybody has talked to me and said, hey, you know, reconsider, can you find a way that we could do roofs? And we don't, how many applications do we have?
Twenty-nine.
We have twenty-nine, okay? We have nine hundred thousand dollars to spend, and it's twenty-five, is it twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand is the max, okay? Um, I think what's gonna happen to us is, we're gonna end up with some of the people who have applied changing it to roofs, and I think we're gonna have quite a few roofs. The next logistics issue, and, and we'll have time to work that out, we need to make the selection first. The next logistic issue is, I gotta have a contractor who is a good roofing contractor. He's gotta be licensed, he's gotta be able to have a bond, he's gotta have a hell of a liability policy. All of those things have to happen. The other step, with our attorney's help, we're gonna have some form and our insurance company's help, that indemnifies the city, that basically the roof issues down the road become between the owner of the property and the roofer. And get us out of the middle of it, okay? And that's very important, and that's really the only reason we can do this. So with those things happening, um, I've started, I wanted to get through tonight and get a vote on it, and then tomorrow I will start calling the reputable roofing contractors that I know and try to make sure that, cause we have to bid all this out, we have to follow our normal procurement processes. So I'll start calling roofing companies that I know are reputable and have good reputations, and start talking to them about, you know, being interested in bidding this. We have to take the low bidder, you can't make a deal, it's not that kinda thing, it's government money. But on the flip side, I wanna make sure that we get some qualified contractors. You know, and then we'll bid it out. Our architect will put the plans together, and there'll be a little set of specifications, and, and we'll bid it as a package of a bunch of roofs. But that is kinda the only way that we could make all of this work, but, you know, sometimes you gotta hit reverse and listen to your community.
Thank you. Thank you for being open to making that change, because this is gonna be a really big deal in our community.
I think it is, cause I ride around and I see so many blue tarps, and, and the more I went, and the more I looked, and the more, you know, I was like, this, we got to figure out a way, because, uh, there's definitely a need, so anyway, that's could be a big change with, with, uh, we have that, and then we have the issue that we would like to put something in that you're not gonna flip the house.
Also.
I know you did, but it's okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, so on, if I can talk about flipping the house.
Yeah, please.
Um, I have seen things before where there were grants to homeowners that said, if you sell the house within X number of years, then you have to return a certain percentage of the profit, you know, depending on the holding period, uh, if you make a profit on the sale of the house. And we could do something similar, I wouldn't make it a long term.
No, right.
You know, you might do two, three years or something like that.
Five years is what I saw with, um.
I've seen five.
I've seen five.
And I saw a Southern Mutual document today that was five. Yeah. Uh, you could do two, you know, and it, we're not talking about a whole entire house, we're talking about roof.
Right.
But, and, or you could do nothing, you know, but some people are gonna fix the roof and sell the house. You know, and I guess the roof is fixed, and you benefited the community, but you benefited one guy a whole lot. So, um, if you wanna do a two-year deal, we're in the first year, if you sell it in the first year, you gotta pay it all back, second year you gotta pay a half back, something like that. You know, we could do some kinda cov, the way they've done it is, they've done a covenant that's recorded. And then we'd also have in there, of course, that, you know, look to the contractor for the warranty, not the city.
Right.
Cause we don't wanna be on the hook for that.
Right.
But, um, yeah, and, and of course, my concern on all this stuff is, we gotta get more applicants.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Yeah. Indeed, I'm sorry, it was the snap, snap grant, uh, five years before you can do anything.
Okay, yeah, USC does two, yeah.
Does, does everybody, let's, let's get that out the way, is two years acceptable to everybody?
Two, three, I mean.
Two, three.
Not sure I do five. Let's do three.
So, if we do one hundred percent, you have to return one hundred percent of the grant, uh, for the first year, fifty percent for the second year, and after the third year, then you don't have to return the money. Is that what we're saying?
The three, on the third year, it'd be so.
That's fine.
So in the third year, they wouldn't owe us anything, cause they stayed in the house for three years. Are we good with that?
In other words, you'd make it go till the end, not after three.
After three, yeah.
You want it after three, and not or, I'm picking on you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and. And what I've seen is, it's out of profit, it's not out of gross, you know, it's out of the profit, so.
Yeah.
In other words, if they sell it for fair market value, i- is what you're saying, that they, they can't make a profit off of what, what we've done from, is what you're saying?
Well, or they have to, well, they have to, the first year they can't, they have to pay us back if they're gonna make a profit. And then, you know, it works off over time.
Gotcha.
Right.
But, I thought we needed some kinda holding period.
No, we didn't.
I agree.
You gotta do a holding period.
Yeah.
So what does everybody think?
Oh, yes, sir, so, so we just gonna do it on anybody that, that receives the grant, not just roofs? Any, anyone?
Any.
Yeah, yeah, in one block.
One block at a time.
No, if you take the money from one block at a time, there's gonna be a holding period.
Okay.
That's, that's a good clarification.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's how the USA does it.
Yeah, that's how.
It doesn't matter what you use the ten thousand for.
Well, we've been talking roof, I just wanna make sure, yeah.
For two, yeah, you can't sell it for two years.
So we're good with two years, and then that or?
Three.
Or the third year. Some, you're saying two, but it's really, it's really a total of three.
Yeah, sure, you should just say, well.
Saying, if, if we put the roof on and then, in, within that first twelve months, they sell it, they gotta repay us.
Yeah, then the second one, they gotta pay half.
They have to pay us half.
And then they hold it till the end of the third year, they don't owe us anything.
Yeah.
So that's three years.
Okay, cool, I'm good.
What if they sell it in the third year? You gotta have something.
Y'all are saying the same thing, so.
Right.
Saying after the third year, at the end of the third year.
At the end of the third year.
Right.
So it'd be a hundred percent, two-thirds, a third, then you free.
That's right.
Yes. Yeah, we had to add that third, because we didn't have any penalty for the third year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Is everybody good?
On completion?
Good with that.
Is everybody good with that?
Just word it right.
Yes, sir.
We can word it right.
Yes, sir. Yes, on completion of the project, time starts when the project's completed.
Cause we're gonna steal somebody else's work, that's what.
Yeah, yeah. So, that gives us that, that gives us the roofs, that was our major changes for one block, but they are major. Uh, is everybody cool with that?
Well, that's the only thing that changed.
That's the only thing we changed.
Yeah.
So is everybody good with that?
Oh, good.
Any more discussion?
You know, we're good with it.
No, I know, I mean, we just.
And are we moving a date on this one or?
Yeah, yes, sir.
August twenty-third.
You don't say.
August twenty-third.
Same thing, okay.
So if there's nothing further on this one, please vote your machines. Awesome, good stuff, good stuff, and thanks for all y'all's help. Lord knows, I need it. Okay, five M.
Resolution number twenty-four one oh one, a resolution creating the administrative process for the litter education American Rescue Plan Act project.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilman Martin Lewis. Okay, on this one, what we're gonna try, we have a hundred thousand dollars. We would like to give the money, and I haven't fleshed this out completely, I need some help. We would like to give the money to civic organizations, and they go ahead and adopt an area. And so we are paying them, it's not quite a lot of money, but you know, you look at a Optimist Club, or a Rotary, or a Knights of Peter Claver, or Coanis.
Masonic.
DNA.
You look at any group, and they selling barbecue dinners and trying to make a hundred dollars, okay, or two hundred dollars. This was a way that for, you know, a couple thousand dollars, is what we're kinda thinking, they would adopt an area and they would clean that area. Well, we can pay them for two years, so for, uh, we do that in twenty-four, so for twenty-five and twenty-six, we have to commit this year, they would get paid to clean this area. Well, if you think of, of all the different little groups we have, this could be really cool. This could be a way that, you know, uh, putting litter signs up, or, you know, when I was a kid, the crying Indian, he was really, not an Indian, and he was from Gato. But that's just a fun story. Uh, but, you know, that, we, we're not set up for that, that's not gonna do any good, that's not gonna make a difference. If we can put this money back in the community in some small amounts, plus make people take a responsibility for the community, that actually might last longer than two years. And it is something that, you know, I, I see, uh, we've been daydreaming this for a while, because at first we were gonna take that old litter van, you know, we tried that with, uh, uh, people who had community service, this and that, it, it, it really, that, that's not, this gets the community involved and keeps a little bit of that money in our community.
Right.
So I don't even know if I told everybody about this, I've been kinda working on, you know, uh, I've mentioned it, but I really didn't have it fleshed out. So that's kinda what we're thinking, and now I'm gonna shut up and I need your feedback.
So, um, I'm thinking that one of the first things we have to do is have them come and register with us?
Yes.
As an organization?
We agree that we're gonna do this, then I thought I would just, uh, put together an email and send it to every civic organization that I could, in, in, that are in the city. And that would be a start of trying to say, hey, I need you to come in, if you're interested in this program, you know?
So do, um, would we want them to do the cleaning before we give them the money?
It's gonna be a partnership, and they, you know, they're gonna sign a contract, uh, because we have to have that contract.
Right.
And then it might be so much, and I, and I need some help doing that, it might be so much a month, it might be so much a quarter, um, we'll have to figure it out, but they do have to.
Well.
They really have to go pick up, I mean, we can't.
The reason I'm asking though is, the reason I'm asking is for the people who would need supplies.
Yeah.
So I need to buy bags, I mean, you know, there are ways that, you know, pickers.
Right, we just might have to take, you know, five thousand dollars out of the hundred and buy all the bags and buy.
Or maybe partner with parish proud.
I thought about doing that too, but one step at a time, I was thinking about maybe, you know, bringing them in too.
I mean, for the supplies, cause they'll give you the supplies even if they don't show up. So I don't know, I'm just saying, we need to be able to either, we have to get them to register, and we have to also provide them with supplies, or money for supplies.
I agree.
Somehow.
Okay.
You could front some money for supplies.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good, yes, sir.
I, I think what we're gonna, what we're gonna see is, we're gonna see some youth organizations wanna do fundraising efforts, and so, I think we need chaperones, we need to consider all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so, you said civic, but I think that's what we could be funding.
Well, okay, like if, uh, Optimus has Junior Optimus, so they could get one Optima, they could get, in other words, through the Optimist Club, they could sponsor the Junior.
So I mean, you may, you may have Westgate Football Team wanna do a fundraiser and come pick up trash. I mean, so you gotta think outside the box, that's gonna happen.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Then Westgate School itself would provide the chaperones and all that, we're not doing.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, but I think we need to.
You know, I'd already kinda thought it would trickle down to a lot of little community parks and P, which is kinda the cool part of it.
Sure.
You know, when I made it up, I was thinking, man, this could end up exactly like that. You could end up with kids, you could end up with older people, I mean, every once in a while, you might, we might be bribing them to do it, but one, we're cleaning our town, and number two, we acting like a community.
Yes.
Uh, that's the fun part of it, is that we're, we're doing, you know?
You need to establish, you know, set a protocols to where, you know, look at the, visually look at the situation before and after, and see if there's dramatic improvement or some kind of improvement.
We're gonna ask them to, I mean, everybody got a, everybody got a phone in their pocket, so, uh, we're gonna ask them to document.
Yes.
You know, take pictures before, take pictures after, and what it's gonna do, people are gonna start putting it on social media, you know, it's, it's gonna do nothing but I think, uh, good stuff and good vibes toward, you know, our community. Yes, ma'am?
How large an area are you talking about?
I don't know, uh, it depends on how many people we get, I mean, I can't say, here's two thousand dollars, go clean the whole town, I mean, you know, uh, they're gonna have to be kinda smaller areas. I am hopeful that we get quite a lot of groups, and, and maybe what's gonna happen in some areas of town, we might get three or four groups, and have to spread them out a little, it'd be a great problem to have, but I haven't worked the logistics out.
I think they're gonna have to propose something to us.
Yes, I do too.
I mean, we're not gonna pay some person a bunch of money to clean his own yard, you know, but by the same token, it's got, it's gotta be practical.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
I'm seeing whatever we work with, possibly.
Well, we could also ask each councilperson to kinda divide up their district and give them, saying, hey, these are certain areas in my district that need to be cleaned.
That'd be great.
And so you, I got these five areas, pick one.
And are we talking about, um, yes?
I'm sorry.
And are we talking about? Two years?
Well, we're gonna have the money for two years, so I figure we.
So we want them to commit to?
Yes.
Two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if they don't do the first year, they don't get the money for the second.
That's exactly right, then I'll find somebody else, or we'll find somebody else.
Right.
But we're supposed to have it committed, I know what you're thinking, the, the, she's, she's the rules, we're supposed to have it all committed by, uh, the end of this year.
Right.
Larry, Larry Richard, with the parish, every meeting he mentions how many dumpsters they fill up, how many the roads they go do and they pick up, it's impressive to hear what they doing. If we could follow a little bit of a lead like that.
That's a little different, that's with the trustees, we don't have trustees. It's a little bit different, you know?
But it sure is impressive to hear.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So.
Yes, sir.
My question for legal is, Jeff, can, can we spend this money on private property, or it has to be, uh, you know, say, say it's a block, a neighborhood they're gonna do, and you know, can we spend money on, if they picking up trash from private properties, from a legal perspective? Cause if we can't, then that, that isolates certain areas that we can't attack, and we can't attack.
Well, I think we need to do certain areas, I mean, I wouldn't do something only on private property.
That's what I'm, yeah.
You know, but, um, if you take a neighborhood, you take a part of the neighborhood.
I'm just using, say they take Little Brooklyn, and they do all of Little Brooklyn plus the, the, the park itself, I mean, we, we're cleaning up, you know, private property plus the park, would, would that be okay with spending money on that?
I think we, I think, yeah. I think we, I think, yeah. I think if it's public and private, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's public, yeah. If it's purely private?
It's, it's a nonprofit, because think about it. We're going in people's houses for one block at a time.
No, no, it's asking.
Yeah. So, I think we fine, because we're doing private property stuff with this money other ways. The other thing is, it's not City Cruise. It's not like someone who's a civil service person is going. We giving it to a nonprofit, so I think we have some protection and it dare do.
But.
We're using federal dollars though.
But.
Huh?
Yeah.
And we are doing something for public benefit, not private benefit. So, we just have to consider that when we make the deals with these people about the areas they're gonna serve. You know, um. Yeah.
I don't know, private property is illegal anyways.
That's why I wanted to bring it up, just wanted to make sure.
To do our job as a city.
Because, because then you got liability issues with them going on private property, picking up trash.
So, would you go ask every neighbor, will you go on your property and pick up your trash?
When, when we out there picking up trash, we walk and pick up trash right close to the street.
Everywhere.
Do it all the time. Every time we.
You need someone called for to pick up their trash.
No, but we go, we go on district cleanups constantly. We for sure within the right of way, but I mean, I can tell you that I can't say we don't go behind the curtain.
Ma'am.
Yeah.
The only, don't, when he brought up private, I'm sitting there thinking, the only thing that I would think about on private property is going and cut grass on private property.
We're not doing that.
But I'm just saying, I mean, we pick up trash on private property. We have never not picked up trash on private property. So, the only thing that would be a liability if we go and cut grass on private property, which I think we should be able to do, but we probably can't do.
We do sometimes.
Cause when we go through these neighborhoods. Because I'm thinking, if you giving a group, uh, however much you giving them, to keep up a neighborhood, I mean, to me, just picking up trash, to me, I mean, what you really spending the money on?
I think it's great.
I mean, get up.
You say it's a great idea to do.
No, no, I, 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 I don't think y'all don't think it's great. What I'm saying is, if, if they can run a lawnmower through some of them yards and pay them for that, whether it's paying them gas or something, then I can see the money really being put to a good use. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going with that. I'm just saying.
Look, through our compliance department.
Cause other than that, go and pick up a piece of paper on private property, there's no real liability in that.
Through our compliance department, we go on private property, we identify the trash, they take pictures of it, I look at it because somebody got to do it, and say, pick this up, don't pick this up, no, this could still be good, it has value, and then we send our Public Works crews on private property in people's yards and we pick up the junk.
Yep.
And we've been doing that since I got here. So, you can't say we never do. We, grass complaints come in, which we're gonna talk about grass in a little while. Um, we, and I'm glad we are, we go on private property all the time and cut grass and put the bill on their taxes.
Yep.
So, it's not that we don't, it, it's, you know, we need to cover our butts and make sure we do this the right way, but we do do it.
But you're not, we, we do it as a city and we have employees and, and we pay, but you talking about volunteers going private property. That's a whole nother ballgame.
Nonprofits though.
Yeah, you talking, it's a whole different ballgame.
Can you sue a nonprofit?
And they don't necessarily have to go on private property.
No.
Can you sue a nonprofit?
Yeah.
Can you sue a nonprofit?
I don't know. That's, look, here's the attorney.
I, I, you know, I think, I think for sanitation, you know, picking up trash, I could, I can understand that.
It could be a health hazard.
It, it is. And, you know, and I go for the roofs, I don't go for the grass cutting with this stuff.
Okay, I'm just, I just put it.
I don't go that far. I know. I know. I mean, this is, you know, you're asking, what do people really need? You know, what's the, what's the serious problem? Um, I, you know, I don't think this is for grass cutting.
I didn't think it, I didn't think it was either. I figured it was litter.
No, I think, I think this is, this is, this is trash. Not just litter, but serious trash.
Trash, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta, you know, we gotta be serious trash.
We got that.
You won't be hard to find places.
Oh, no, there'll, there'll be trash to pick up. Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible for us just to say, um, to the nonprofit group, if you're going to pick up trash on private property, you might want to check with the homeowner or the property owner. If not, you know, if you want to do it, you do it at your own risk. Because, I mean, to me, that's the only thing, we're gonna have to pick up some of that trash on private property. We always do. It's near the fence, it's right behind the fence, it's easy for us to access it, it's the, all the empty lots. Remember the day it took us, almost twenty of us to clean one empty lot?
One lot?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, on Hopkins Street.
I was with you.
It was took us almost twenty people. Yeah.
We should've got paid. We worked.
Yeah, exactly. On that one particular property. So, my thing is, is that people are gonna do that, but let's let them make the decision on whether or not they want to go on a private property or not. Just understand that we expect you to clean it up. If you're gonna go on it, go ask the person, hey, can I go on that piece of property? Why is the city involved?
I mean, we're gonna have to have an agreement with them where they take this on, and we can say in the agreement, we're not giving anybody permission to trespass.
Exactly. Let it be their choice.
There you go.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not giving anybody permission to trespass.
There you go. Again, that's why we have Jeff.
Now, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Dee, help me if I remember, and I know y'all against grass cutting, and I know we may not even have enough money to do the grass for those nonprofits. Didn't y'all do a, a, a cleanup one time, y'all was out there with riding lawnmowers, and I was very impressed. I was like, y'all was cutting people. So, if the group is doing stuff like that, then if it's been done before.
Well, if they asked permission.
Right, but no, there was on lots that, no, there was, this was after lots that was adjudicated to the city that needed cutting, cause they didn't cut it.
We have permission.
Oh, okay. All right.
You remember Ron?
Y'all just.
And so, we went out there and we cut it.
We gonna talk about that.
Just went all rogue on your own.
Well, because it was.
I kinda like it.
It was taking too long. It was one of those seasons where it was a lot of rain and the people were complaining, so we went out there and we cut the grass. Because the city didn't have, I mean, by the time you guys got back to it, it was taller than me. So, we, we took it upon ourselves to cut the grass.
So, ma'am, will we have a drop up, a place where they bring all the garbage at the end of the day, or they gotta get rid of it?
Dumpster.
Do they bring it to?
No, we'd have to have some dumpster.
We gonna get Pelican to bring a dumpster. We gonna get Pelican to bring a dumpster.
Look, our favorite vendor's right there.
Pelican been bringing us dumpsters and everything. Free yard, and we gotta give them that much. They've been coming through foul cleanups. Oh, definitely.
Oh, no, they have, they have.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
On vacant lots, you know, people just tend to throw trash on vacant, on vacant lots. Uh, tires, uh, other kinds of things. So, are they, the group's gonna be able to pick up those kind of items to put in the dumpster?
That's.
Well, I think where they go is for them to work out. I mean, they're gonna have to get permission if they're gonna go on somebody's property and, and pick up stuff. Yeah, that, we're gonna have to leave that to them.
And we have no harm, no foul if they have permission.
Yeah.
And we're not instructing them to, to go on private property and go cut grass like we should press charges against, uh,
The DNA?
No, I'm picking, I'm picking. But, you know, we're not gonna tell them. I think that the way we're heading is, this is the areas, this is how much we can pay you, this is what we'd like you to adopt for two years. And, you know, if you trespass, you don't trespass. So, in our agreement, if they decide to go on private property to do that, they just gonna have to work that out themselves.
Exactly.
As part of, of what they're doing.
It's at their discretion.
See them do that? Yes, ma'am. That's where all the, the major violations are, but I think we'll just have to work that out.
If, if we're going on somebody's property to do stuff on their property without their permission, you know, then we got the whole, all the processes that we have for grass cutting and demolition and junk and all that kind of stuff where you gotta give people notice and all. This is all gonna be.
We can't encode it, our process. We only go on private property after we send them letters, after it's taken two, three months sometimes. After those letters have been chased around by the post office and come back and not been served, and they've gotta do it again. So, there is some other steps before we or Public Works or any of our people go on private property.
Yeah, and you got absentee owners you're never gonna reach, you know, but some people may say, hey, I don't mind if you go clean up my property, you know?
Yeah.
And, but the property that you and I were discussing, the three of us, that we actually worked on in Hopkins, we didn't have permission. There was just piles of trash on there. We went and we picked it up.
All of that, it was a little district cleanup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we'll leave it to that discussion.
But, yeah, we're not getting paid for it.
And we weren't getting paid for it.
No, we were volunteering.
And we were probably trespassing, but we did a good job.
We did. Although we need to go back, cause it's.
Well, that's, that's why we're here fleshing this out. This is government at work. So, I think we heading somewhere. Uh, my first thing was, does everybody agree that this program should be attempted?
That's a good idea. So, absolutely.
Yes.
Number two, now we have some parameters, so we can write all those down and, and, and look, maybe no civic group's gonna wanna do it. I might be coming back to you and saying, you know, we didn't have any takers. But, uh, I think it's worth a try, a try because of what it could.
I think we'll have some.
I think you have a lot of takers.
What it could do in the community.
Yes.
You know?
That's.
You got any other, any other?
Or like, what are the qualifications of, like, a group?
Well, we, it's a civic organization, so, you know, they'll have a charter, they'll have, you know, everything a civic organization has.
Civic, social, fraternal. That's the ones you want, right?
I mean, it's gotta be some organization.
Yeah, some existing organization.
Yeah, and.
Do we have to say they should be an organization from before May fifth of twenty twenty?
No, and, and I don't think they have to be an organization registered with Secretary of State, you know, cause you got a lot of unincorporated organizations and, you know, I, I, no, I think we're gonna have to use a judgment on that.
Yeah, I agree.
So, sir, so if somebody goes create an organization after the fact, are we gonna say prior to this, before?
No, we're not. That's what we said we weren't putting it in. Okay, that's why.
I, I don't think this is COVID stuff. This is trash.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we got some money because of COVID.
Well, as the clerk says, we got the money because of COVID.
Well, we're gonna focus on cleaning up areas in the census tract. That's our R.
Man, but we're gonna do the whole town. We're gonna do the whole town. Yeah, 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 I hear you. I know. I'm picking on you.
Okay, one more question.
Yes, ma'am. No, that's why we doing this.
If an organization registers and all, and then there's, there's this vacant lot and it's got a lot of trash on it, can we contact our city attorney in order to send him the letters and all, so then eventually that can be cleaned up?
Well, you can contact the inspection department.
Comply.
It goes to the mayor first, who decides what we do all day.
All day. That's ridiculous, but we have to, because we're gonna get sued if we don't.
And, and, and that, you know, go through the, we can follow our process.
Okay.
You can certainly turn this stuff in to the city where, you know, the administration decides what the priorities are. Um, yeah, you can do that.
And look, there are times people turn things in and we don't, we can't pick up anything.
Right.
There are times that it looks like, you know what, but it's lawnmowers, it's motorcycles, it's gas tanks that look like they hold it, you know, gas, it's stuff in the yard, it's, it's yard tools, it's everything you can imagine. But if it has a value, we don't pick it up. So, there are times they send me, they send me photographs and I just tell them, well, I didn't mark anything. Because you can't pick it up, so.
But we wanna pay people for doing the work. We don't wanna pay people for making a list of the work that they want us to do.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
But I think most of these organizations know how to handle a community cleanup. I mean, it's, it's easy. I mean, we just tell them, it's at your discretion, but we wanna see before and after pictures. We wanna see that there was a mess and that you did something to impact it in a positive way.
I'm clerk. I, I hear you. What you got?
Do we care if, like, somebody makes a group tomorrow and they're like, oh, they're giving out money to clean? And they come tomorrow and say, oh, we'll clean up this area, but they're not a, an organized group that's working?
That's a good question.
Should be a nonprofit.
Ricky, you kinda asked that quick. That's kinda what you asked.
I was asking.
Should be like a nonprofit.
But, I mean, they can make a nonprofit overnight.
Exactly, that's easy.
They should be, I mean, we should issue checks. We should issue checks, right?
We have to have some. Yeah.
And we should issue checks.
And I have to go through my regular, I can't issue a check to just any citizen. It has to be a group and it has to be a nonprofit.
No. It has to be some organ, somebody, yeah.
Yeah, some other civic.
You gotta have a five one C?
Well, no, you gotta have a checking account.
You gotta have a checking account. I gotta have a receipt. I gotta have something.
Gotta have a checking account, cause we gotta have a way to pay you.
That's, that's exactly right.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you know.
Check.
Right, right by bed. Yep, she shaking her head. Yeah, see, I mean, you know, we gotta have that. Or I get in trouble that I didn't spend the money the right way?
Exactly.
We gotta have a paper trail.
A checking account in one of the requirements or something and I need you.
And this only lasts for two years, right?
Two years.
So, if you wanna make a group to clean up the community for two years, then.
Knock yourself out.
Knock yourself out.
Go ahead.
Knock yourself out.
Maybe I sort of took the get them out to work.
No problem, but.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's what you have out of the guideline.
Well, you can do that. You off on Mondays and you be off the council?
But I gotta wait two years after though, right?
Oh, you're right.
Okay, so.
Believe me, I know.
I know you do.
A parameter for assistance to nonprofits.
But you can help out a group.
I go, I will help out a group. I'm helping out my group. I'm helping out my son in class.
It does list that.
Okay.
We're gonna help D and N.
Profits to do community work, sorry, to be there.
Church groups. I'm not gonna read it all, but there is some parameters from the Treasury's office on how we can work with nonprofits.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause Lainey checks every bit, you know, all these crazy ideas and all this stuff that we put together, you know, somebody's gotta be the check and it's her. And so, there are a lot of times that it comes back, you can't do this, you can't do that. All those rules, we didn't make them up. They've all come from a whole lot of research and, and thank you for that, Lainey. But we'll have to follow this.
Okay.
You know, and put it in the parameters.
I would love to see more kid groups doing it.
Me too.
To be honest with you.
Well, I'd love to see these nonprofits.
Nonprofits as well, but.
Get kids involved. And, yeah, I agree. I agree. I mean, that's kind of the vision, you know? Yes, ma'am.
I don't think these would eliminate any of the people that you, like, any of the groups that have been mentioned so far.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good, good.
Thank you, Lainey.
Good.
Keep us out of trouble.
So, if there's, oh, that's her full-time job is to.
Keep us out of trouble.
Keep me, uh, straight. Unfortunately, a whole lot of staff members have that job. Sorry. And, and our city attorney. Okay, so, we're pretty well wrapping up the litter. Everybody's cool with the new program and what we would do? Then if there's no further discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Can't believe Ricky didn't vote for his project. Oh, let's go, move, let's move.
Um, I didn't even see what's going. Uh, now we go to five in?
Resolution number twenty-four one oh two, a resolution amending the administrative process for the Anti-Violence American Rescue Plan Act project.
All right, this project, this is something cool. Last year, we did some signs and we did some billboards and a lot of community members came out and it was good, and I still see our signs, and we have a new little round of signs. There's some here tonight. Um, we wanna do something more substantial. We kinda said in the beginning, we would do the signs and then we would find some way to have some program. Okay, we have two Boys and Girls Clubs. The Boys and Girls Club, as an organization, does things in big cities, uh, where there are major crime issues. And unfortunately, we're a small city with some big city problems, okay? We all acknowledge that. So, they do some anti-crime, anti-gang, uh, stuff with kids. Well, you know, if you look like the Obama in me, uh, the Leader in Me Program Obama had put in when he was the president, and it reached kids when they were really young and they did all these studies. I happened to have dinner one night with Dr. Schumacher, who sponsored that and paid for it in Lafayette, and he says, if you're not catching kids by the time they seven, eight years old, you're not gonna catch them, okay? So, thinking of that and trying to figure out, how could we take this money and make it have an impact in the areas it needs to with the kids we need to reach? So, I reached out to Boys and Girls Club. They've been a great partner. They, we have two clubs. For a town our size, it's very unusual for us to have two Boys and Girls Clubs. They're willing to implement all of those programs, all those anti-gang programs, to get that out to the kids for the ne, and they'll commit to the next two years. So, we would take our money and partner with Boys and Girls Club, and they would implement all of these programs. And I'm looking at it, talking to them, seeing that it has been successful in big cities. I mean, we, we know different than any other city and we have issues and problems that we, we all face. We have a ton of community groups here who are doing an impact and doing good things. We, we're funding two of them, uh, tonight.
Right.
But I'm gonna take all the help I can get. So, uh, partnering with Boys and Girls Club to implement those nationwide programs, I think, is a really positive way to, to spend a, a good chunk of this money.
Great.
Um, so, I'll open it up for a discussion. Um, we've already sponsored a Boys and Girls Club in the West End Park, so this would be that club and also the club on Sinister. So, I'll open it up for discussion.
Or a motion.
I like it.
Yeah, we haven't done a motion.
So, ma'am, I'm, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering what the process is, because the, the resolution is. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what that means. So, are we tying it to the Boys and Girls Clubs? How much money is involved? We need to flesh this out a little bit.
Oh, yeah, we do. We have almost a hundred and fifty thousand left. We're gonna take some of it and still do our sign program and still do some advertising. So, it's probably gonna be around a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two years, implemented, split between the two clubs, you know, that they're gonna do this evenly so that we hit a lot of kids in, in a lot of areas of our community. They have a little, uh, where's that little write-up?
I forgot to print it, but I have it on my.
Okay, we have a write-up that I was gonna pass out tonight, uh, that I got from Ron Wheeler of some of the steps and some of what they're gonna do.
So, we're gonna have an agreement with them? They're gonna do these services?
We'll have an agreement with them, fleshed out services, dollar amounts. Uh, you know, tonight was really to just kind of get the concept out there and make sure that all the council kind of agreed and thought that this was, you know, a worthwhile venture.
Yes.
And I have looked and looked since we asked the Boys and Girls Club, and remember years ago, we started courting the Boys and Girls Club and said, we'd like you to come to our community and do something in the West End, and we could give you that part of the, the gym, and then we got lucky and got to buy a school that is gonna make up for some of the things we lost. So, it's kind of all working to our advantage. Um, but this is the next step, uh, you know?
Yeah, ma'am, we were, uh, the thing about it, the, uh, Boys and Girls Club came out of some of our campaigns, some of our anti-violence campaigns and, uh, town halls that we put on.
Definitely, definitely. The town halls were a big catalyst, if you remember.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Councilman Leibert and Councilman Reed, you know, and they came to us.
Yeah.
And said, hey, we wanna help.
And myself and the chief.
So, now we have an opportunity to go to them and say, hey, let us continue helping. Let us help you help us.
That's exactly right.
And, uh, I think the Boys and Girls Club, and they're a well-oiled machine. They got all of the components in place to, to spend government money for the benefit of their cause.
Yep, and they catch the kids at a very early age and they just have that real structured environment. I mean, I think it's, uh, you know, something very worthwhile.
Cause I always say, people want government money, but it ain't easy to spend. Let somebody who know how to spend it spend. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Look, we government and sometimes we don't spend it fast enough, you know? I mean.
Having a hard time tonight?
Yeah, we having a hard time tonight. We, uh, agreed.
If I learn one thing, government money ain't easy to spend.
Nope. It's not. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Everybody's good with it? And, uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll ask you to vote your machines. Oh, wait, we need a motion. I'm sorry.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, a second by, who is the second?
Me.
Councilwoman Deidre Leibert, thank you. Um, so with that, I'm getting ahead of myself. Uh, please vote your machines. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
For, I'm gonna go back to litter for a second. Are we seeing how many people are interested and then determining how much money they get?
Yeah, we're gonna do that one a little bit backwards. In other words, let's see how much we get, uh, before we commit to how much we have. Okay, well, that takes care of with some great work. I mean, this ain't government, local government at work. I don't know what is, but this takes care of all of our ARPA programs of this nature. So, we'll make the changes and try to get the word out even more in the community and see if we can get some more takers. Thank y'all very much. Now, we go to six A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-two forty-three two, an ordinance amending the budget for the HUD Section Eight voucher program and setting for public hearing on August second, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, you wanna tell us what's going on here?
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now. Uh, Haley couldn't be here tonight. Wait, Bob Betts here? Hello?
Oh, this is just a, a budget amendment, because she has more units under lease, so she's getting more money from HUD and we need to amend the budget to reflect the increased revenue and with that, also the increase, um, hap, the expenditures.
Okay.
To the tenant, to the landlords.
Okay, thank you.
Haley is our rock star that has really been growing that program, so this is a good problem to have.
Yes.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Any questions or comments? And please vote your machines.
Hand it balances.
All right, now, we move on to discussion items, unlike we have been discussing all night, but, uh, Madam Clerk, seven A.
A discussion relating to the salary of New Iberia City Council members.
So, um, I asked for this to be put on the agenda as a discussion item because, um, after being in this role for almost four years, and thinking about the pay that we pay councilpeople and the fact that the council members have not had a raise in many, 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 many years. I thought it was important as one of the last things that I do before I leave this seat, um, to really try and help make sure that we are, uh, giving our councilpeople the right amount of money as far as compensation for the work that they're doing. And some of the reasons why I brought this up is because I do feel like there's been an increase in workload. I'm not sure what councilpeople were doing many, many years ago, but I know that, um, as councilpeople, we actually do a lot that the public doesn't know about. There is a lot of meetings that are being held like during the day, uh, where people who have, um, jobs or they have, uh, their own business, they have to take away from their business to attend these meetings. There's a lot of things that go on in the community that we're a part of, that we have to be involved in. And this isn't necessarily something that was thought of when, um, the pay was structured many, many years ago. Also, as the city grows, the issues are becoming more com- more complex. They're not the easiest problems to solve as we've talked tonight about how we allocate this money and all the different people we have to help. We spent a lot of time, not just in this meeting, but in other meetings, trying to figure a lot of these things out. Also, we do a lot of things as city councilmen that really we're not compensated for. We do a lot of volunteer work and we do it because we love our community, but it does take time away from the other things that we can do and from our families. And it's important that people understand that, you know, there's a lot that goes into this job, it's just not the, the two meetings a month that we sit in here, there's a lot more to it. Also, um, I think that when you look at the pay, if you wanna attract people who maybe have, uh, more qualifications for the job, you're going to have to pay them, cause a lot of them, you know, they expect to be paid at a professional level. And so some people don't feel like they can even accept this because this, this job takes a lot of your time, a lot of your personal time. So if you're not being compensated properly, it's hard to make that decision to come and do this work when you are not being properly compensated. A- and as a councilperson who's been sitting in this, uh, seat for three and a half years, I can tell you that there's a lot of organizations that come to us for donations. We give a lot of the compensation we get away. And so it's like, um, there's a lot to this, we just need to be thinking about, okay, you know what? Are we making sure that we're properly compensating the people so that they can do the work of this city? And then I would say that, um, there's other work, like, I know for, I'll speak for myself. I worked a lot this year with the state representatives, trying to get some other bills passed, doing a lot of research. And this was just on my volunteer time, just trying to do things to help make the city better. And I think that when you think about all the extra time that goes into doing what needs to be done, the work that needs to be done for this city, and you look at the compensation, it doesn't feel like there's equity there. And then the last thing I think is that the public expects us to compensate everybody fairly. When every year we give our, um, employees a cost of living raise, we know inflation's been going up. We give, I think the mayor's included in that, the directors are including that, the only group that's not included in that is the council. And so it's like, okay, so at what point do you compensate them? Because they're dealing with all the same issues that employees are dealing with, they're dealing with inflation. They're dealing with even, uh, spending more money like, um, on, on your car. We get a car allowance, but you know, when we drive to Shreveport to go to a conference, we're not compensated for the extra wear and tear on the car. We're not compensated for the phone, we're not compensated for the act, the, the fact that we have to have Wi-Fi, that we have to have computers. Those things weren't requirements back in the day when this council started to, I mean, figure out their compensation, but there are issues today. And so when you look at all the things that this council does in order to move this city forward, I just feel like we need to make sure that we're compensating the council members properly. And then at this, uh, earlier this year, the mayor had a conference here in New Iberia with all the mayors from around Acadiana and then even as far as, I don't know, Slidell, you know, Evangeline Parish, um, Calcasieu, all of these different mayors came. And when you look at their compensation, even towns are much smaller than ours. Their compensation is more parity with what it should be versus what we are getting here in the city of New Iberia. And, and I'm bringing this up because again, I'm not running for my seat in the next four years, so my thing is, is that I just wanna bring this issue to the table because I'm not gonna benefit from this. I, this is gonna benefit the next council. But I feel like it's an important issue so that as we move forward and we move this city forward, that the people that we're hiring to, to represent us, they're, they are compensated properly and fairly. Because it's unfair that we actually ask them, and they, we ask a lot of our councilpeople. We ask a lot of them, we expect them to come prepared for meetings, we expect them to know the issues and know how to solve the problems of the city, and then we expect them to be in the community. We expect them to give up their time, whether it's through work or family, whatever time that they would be doing something else with, we expect those people to give up that time. So I'm just saying that when you look at that, let's balance what we ask of our, our councilmembers with what we pay them. And let's make sure that that, they're being paid fairly. And based on what I've seen, I don't feel like we're at a point where we're paying them fairly. And, um, and so I wanted to bring this discussion up, I don't know, I know this is a sensitive subject, especially for councilmembers that are coming back. But I want you guys to know that, I mean, I'm doing this because I think that you guys deserve some sort of parity. And I know it's a sensitive subject, but I do think that if we don't sit here and have this discussion and talk about how to make sure we're treated fairly, then no one else is gonna do that. So I don't see anybody running to come in and do this, so I'm, I'm trying to take the lead on it, so that's why I'm bringing it up today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, since, since I'm being termed out and I don't have, uh, I'm not gonna be compensated, you know, with new pay or different pay next year. I do agree, uh, with some of Councilwoman Reed's sedim- uh, sentiments. I look at this scale she gave us and, um, you know, there are some small towns that get what we get. There are some bigger towns that don't get what we get. You know, I, for me, I wouldn't look at a big increase, but just comparable. Cause it's never been, everything went up, but, everything went up, but, but the city council's salary. I got a job, I think I do pretty well. But this job takes away from your job if you got a job.
Right.
Now, do I feel like I've been compensated fairly? Absolutely. I've never once in eight years complained to not one person about their salary. Not one time. When I signed up, I didn't even know what the pay was. I really didn't, I really didn't. I wasn't gonna ask my pay because she told me, find out for yourself. And, you know, she, she did a good job, I thought, but I never once asked what the salary was, you know, and I just feel like, for me, I gotta say this. Even though I agree that we are compared to other cities, I agree that we are underpaid, underpaid. But if you're coming here for the money, you're coming here for the wrong reason. I'm serious. I'm a firm believer, cause I got an uncle in Florida and some of the city commissioners, they get, they get, they, they work on the council for free. There are some, there are some communities around the country, and I didn't take time, that work for free. But I don't think they should. I don't know how they setup is. But I know here in Louisiana, nobody work for free. And if everybody else getting paid, then we should get paid comparably to what everybody else. When I went, what made me, cause me and, me and Councilwoman Reed, Reed have been talking about this a while, but what made me kind of say, okay, you know, I'll stand with you on this, I'm be honest with you. I got a lot of friends in Abalucis and a lot of friends on the council, and when I found out Abalucis was making more than us, I, she, I should tell you, I called her.
Yeah.
I said, Dee, I say, Abalucis making fourteen hundred, you got, you got sixteen fifty.
Sixteen fifty, that's what the mayor told me.
Um...
It must be without their car allowance. Yeah.
Maybe, huh? Cause I see some of them even offer...
Well, yeah, they have house, they have health benefits, uh, as part of their package. And I haven't even talked about that stuff.
And I'll say this, I'll do this again for this, I'll do this again, I'll do this again for what we getting now. But when you hear about it, we just left LMA, and my number one question to everybody I met, how much y'all get a month? And it was more than we got, mostly everybody.
Yeah.
The town of Ball, small town, oh, I love their mayor, you met their mayor?
Yes, yeah, she's really nice.
Oh. Very nice lady.
They get...
Ball is small.
Three thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven, they get a thousand dollars, we get nine fifty.
Right.
Uh...
And that's what the car allowance for us.
But I never once felt like, that's all I'm gonna say, I never once felt like I didn't get paid enough, I didn't feel like, oh man, never once, never once. I enjoy, I enjoy my job, then I got my, my barber shop was like my office, they come in there and take care of business, I mean, it never was a stress for me, you know, financial stress or anything like that, it's just for me com- com- comparison. I feel the same way about my haircut. You know, uh, I went to Shreveport and, and, and looked for, tried to get a haircut for myself and, uh, I walked in the barber shop and, uh, I charged like twenty-five dollars, free advertising, but whatever. And the guys over there was like forty dollars, I'm like, man, I was like, I gotta go back and raise my, but I wasn't gonna go raise it to forty.
Right.
Right? Cause I know Shreveport is bigger.
Exactly.
I said, I gotta go back and look at my community, look at my price, I always look at my community and what my community can pay me. I, my barber shop is in the West End, you know, uh, I don't like to say we poor, but you got people that don't have good job. I like to try to keep my prices comparable where people can walk down the street, pay for a haircut, can afford it, and then go back and buy himself need to.
Right.
And with this, I feel like it's not a, it's not a competition as far as, it's not about drawing new, oh man, if we put the salary at two thousand, we're gonna get some lawyers to apply for this job. I'll tell you what, we gonna have trouble if we get the people that's overqualified, you know, to do this job. Because most of the people overqualified to do this job probably won't have the time that we have, Dee. You know, you retired. I got a barber shop, why can't tell somebody, hold on, let me go run to this meeting at City Hall.
But there are people like Councilwoman Marca, she still has a job. My thing is, is that what we're trying to do...
No, no, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have the floor, I apologize.
And, but I'm just saying, I would support it, but my thing would be how much. I just, look...
My suggestion, you want my suggestion?
Look, I just wanna beat Ball, Louisiana. I, I just, you know, I just wanna beat Ball, Louisiana.
Well, pick that one.
And let's see.
Pick Slidell.
No, I'm just saying.
Same number of people.
No, Dee, this is my opinion, let me finish. Come on now, well, let me finish, that's my opinion, I just personally, I just wanna beat the time, the town smaller than me that's getting more than me. You know, I wanna meet them, that, that's my opinion, I understand where you at, I'm saying where I'm at.
Okay.
You know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to keep up, not catch up, if that makes sense. I'm trying to keep up, not catch up. So that's all I'm doing. I'm not trying to, oh man, I want whatever, I don't, I can't even come up with a number tonight, I wouldn't dare come up with a number tonight. I'd like to see an analysis, you know? I'm not a finance person, I like to see a financial analysis, is what this, what the city can afford to pay versus what we getting paid, what another city can afford to pay versus what, 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 what we getting paid. I wouldn't just wanna throw out a number out there, cause I can pay for my car note right now without this. So, so I wouldn't just throw a number out there, and I know you can. Pay for your car note without this.
Oh, I have a car note.
But I'm saying, I'm saying, if you, if you had one, if you had one, you can pay for it with, without this.
But, okay, so Councilman Lewis.
No, no, Dee, please understand.
No, I understand, I just wanna, can I just respond?
You're not gonna change my mind about how I believe about it, just get your point out and...
He still has the floor.
I'm, I'm trying to get my point out and be done with it, cause we not voting on nothing tonight anyway.
This is only a discussion item.
So I'm just getting my point out and be done with it. Don't, if you wanna try to convince me, talk to me after the meeting.
No, I'm not trying to convince you.
I'm not gonna change tonight on how I feel about it.
Hey, you still have the floor.
I'm done.
Can I get it back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm not, and again...
Cause I agreed that we need to go up.
No, o- okay, I agree. I'm not trying to base this solely on the other communities and how much they make. I'm also saying, based on the work that we are being expected to do, and I'm talking about expected from our constituents, that the compensation isn't satisfactory based on the amount of work that we're being doing. So I'm saying, let's give ourselves some parity there, because we're asked to do a lot of things and we, we're happy to do it, but we need to be compensated for it. Because it does take away from your business. It does take away from your bit, you know, maybe, maybe you're one of those guys, you don't care. But the next people, okay, but I'm saying is that the next people that are sitting in these seats, what we wanna do is make sure that we're not hindering their ability to be compensated properly and also keep their job or keep their business, cause maybe I have a job, but maybe I'm the most qualified person that should be sitting in this seat. Because maybe I have some experience that the city needs, I have some expertise that the city needs, but I need to be compensated properly so that I don't take away from my family because of the fact that the city has decided that those skills as a council member isn't, uh, isn't worth this amount. It's not just about the other communities, it's about the work also. So please, I, that's the only, I'm not trying to change your mind, I just wanted to make sure you were clear that I'm not just comparing us to other communities, I'm also talking about the amount of work that we do as council members.
Can I give you the number one qualification, what got me elected? The heart, that's what got me elected.
Well, you know what?
Heart for doing things for people and knowing how to tell them when I couldn't do it. That's what happened for me.
But that may not be the case in the future.
Well, they need to know that, they need to study, cause I think me and you did a great job. And I think we did probably more than the average person would have done in this seat. But we did that because we wanted to do that. We did it from our heart.
We did it because our community needed it.
If I do this again, I'm gonna do it for po- for more money, then I'm not doing it for that, I'm doing it to make sure that I'm keeping up with the communities around me.
Well, I have the floor.
I'm not doing it for what I'm gonna do and what I ain't gonna do, I'm doing it because them communities making more than me, that's what I'm doing it for.
Okay, well, that's, that's your, that's your decision.
Cause I do what I do from my heart.
But I, what I'm saying to you is that it always, it doesn't always have to be about the heart, it, it's also because it's what our community needed. We wouldn't be doing it just to be doing it from the heart, we doing it, we're doing it because our community...
If you know my story, you know why I do it.
But we are doing it because there's a need in the community, that's why we're doing it.
No, but if you know my story, you know why I do it from my heart.
Okay, what I'm just saying is Marlon, is, I'm sorry, Councilman Lewis, it's more than just that, there's a need in the community. And all I'm saying is that as we bring more people on, as we move this city forward, as we become more innovative, as we get to the next level as a city, because as we bring in all these businesses and bringing in new technology, the level of the council member is going to have to go up. Because our knowledge and our expertise has to get to another level, because we're gonna have even more complex problems than the ones we're solving today. So what I'm saying is that if you're gonna attract the people that can help the mayor solve these problems, they need to be compensated appropriately, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, well said, we, look, we agree we need to be compensated, but we disagree on why.
Okay, then we'll agree to disagree.
Okay, everybody good? Yes, sir?
I just wanna point out, when the Charter Commission did this, I wish they'd done the same thing for the mayor, they didn't. But we put this decision in the council's hands. So in the Charter, it says that before it was in the, in the Charter, the compensation was fixed in the Charter. And you had to amend the Charter to increase the council's compensation. But when the Charter Commission met, they said, no, we're gonna leave the decision to the council members about what the appropriate compensation is, so y'all can change that by ordinance. You don't need a charter amendment to do it, okay? I don't know what the parish council makes, I'd like, you know, I'd be interested in...
Less.
Is it less?
Less.
I don't know.
Well, what's the number?
Uh, Rick, what's the number, help us?
What's the number for the parish council?
Parish council.
About around five hundred.
Five hundred a month?
Or something.
Without, with, uh, without a, a car allowance?
No benefits, zero benefits.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think the mayor's underpaid. You know, my hourly rate for my regular work is, is, is more, you know, I know, I know, and I've worked with twenty-five or thirty council members over a long period of time. Y'all all work hard.
Exactly.
Y'all all work hard, I mean, I, I, seriously, y'all do, y'all work hard. So this is a legitimate discussion.
I agree.
It's a discussion the Charter puts into council's hands. I'm not sure how you move forward with a proposal, you know, but it's, 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 just like all the other decisions y'all make, it's entrusted to you.
Me and Dee gonna work on a proposal.
I have one, but I'm a, I'm a table it until we work together on it.
We ain't gonna work it out here.
No, we gonna work on it at home. At your barber shop.
Council going in there.
I did. Well, you know, um, when I got a, I got appointed to this council before I ran for the seat. And someone said, it won't be long, just for a year.
Yeah, he beat me.
And that was there.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's right.
We go way back.
That's amazing. Anyway, I wasn't sure you got paid. I really didn't care. And come to find out, I did get paid. And I ran for election, and that was over twenty-five years ago, and I'm still here. I understand exactly what you're talking about. On my end, it's not about a money issue, I have my own business. As she spoke about people coming to you because you're in politics, they need this, they need this. When I was out of politics for four years, they kept coming to me, I need this, so that didn't change. You know? And it's just my personal opinion, I'm not against anything which y'all think, it's my personal opinion. If you raise it five hundred, whatever, do you change the type of people that come up here or the love for this community? I mean, my wife, when I got appointed, and December, my wife said, what? Everything she said is, is legit. My end is like, I'm not gonna say I, I won't take it, but I don't want it. That's not why I'm doing it, I'm blessed. I was born here, my family's here, my kids live here, I have a business here, you can't get much better than that. And I serve on this council with three mayors, I mean, my life is pretty great. So money is not an issue to me. But it's like, you know, when we got in council, I got here and within two years, they had health insurance. I was the main one that took it away, but it wasn't by myself, I just told the council, are you here to serve, or are you here for health insurance? And we voted against it to let that extra money to go to the employees. We had retirement. Did away, went to the employees, that was, that's how long I've been here, believe it or not. And I had a life insurance, and I think we all still have one. I had to turn it over to give it to the city, I don't want it, give it to- It was an act of Congress for me to put the city in New Iberia as a beneficiary. They never seen that before. So every city is different, every council member is different. And I, I, you know, it's never about the money, I understand what DeeDee talking about, bringing people, but to me, if you don't have the love for this, you can have a council member works, you probably won't have one working as hard as she does. I think I work pretty hard, I think y'all work pretty hard. But you have some council members come to two meetings and that's all they do, is come to two meetings. They not involved. So I think the, the personality and the person has a lot to do with serving. To me, I don't think money's the issue, we talked about parish. They have way more meetings than we do, you know, and they get paid way less. So I don't know, I understand where, where it's coming from, but I don't stand, on my end, it's not about the money and it's my, it's about what I like to do and leave something for the community that I could say, I could put my hat on and say, we did this, and we. Cause I'm one vote, and for many years, I was only one vote. It was like, you know, six, one. But it takes a council to do that, and it, it's, you know, as she's mentioned, everything she mentioned is right. Nobody wants to bring it up, but boy, if it would pass, everybody would take it.
Exactly.
I understand it, but I, I don't, I don't know the answer, you know, I, I could never accept that, me, I never could support it, and that's just me. I would never fault nobody else for doing what, whatever and why they wanna do it. But as Jeff, it used to be a charter thing, and when Jeff was part of the charter, and they made all kind of change, I think maybe Freddie was, yeah. And, and that was one change they did about salaries on it. So it is an opportunity that the council can take that before, it was major before they could, you know, could make that change. But, you know, I don't think money can make you do this job. There's not enough money to make you do this job. And I'm not being ugly, but the calls you get, I mean, I'm in a business, in a service business, and I get a lot of calls. And these calls are different calls. And the call for someone with tall grass, or someone that, a dog in their yard, or call a, a tree fountain, it's all important to those people. And you gotta put as much attention to that small call that you think is not a big call to one that's really important. I got five today that was like, really? I mean, it's a hundred and three degrees, I got a lot of things happening in my business, and you can call me about this? But is that important to the citizens of the city? And look, look, I've been here twenty-five years, I'm gonna tell you, dude, I, I don't wanna toot my own horn, but with the mayor we have in this council, the, the city's pretty lucky. I mean, y'all did a lot, I mean, those four years that I was not here, not quite four years. A lot of things happened, people keep saying, what's the city doing? The city's doing a lot, this is the best shape the city's been in a long time. And, and people just don't see it. And, and, and what you said, I'm not disagreeing with you saying. I'm just like, I'm not in favor of doing that, you know, as, as, as a councilman for District Six. The next councilman might be, I don't know. But, um, it, it is a lot, but it's no different than people that volunteer that we appoint to these boys.
Right.
Jeez, they take out issues, maybe not as many issues as we do, but they just as important as the issues that we take on every day. I, I, you know, sometimes I think about those people. Cause all their meetings are at night, and they all about employees and about decisions that affect people just like we make, and they get paid nothing. I, I always wondered about that, so I guess you can't pay them, but something, do something for them, cause it's a lot of commitment. But it's about commitment, you know? I, I don't think there's a dollar figure you can take that will really pay for all the time and, um, the decisions you make. I mean, I made some tough decisions over the years that haunts me to this day, it's like, man, shit, I went this way, this way, but that's what we doing, I think, and we need to move on, but, uh, I understand completely, it was DeeDee, I'm not disagreeing, but what you said is pretty much right, and, um, things are changing, and things are getting more expensive, and it's really probably be up to the council members to do what they want, but that's just how, um, I feel, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard?
Mr. Dan, I think you hit it on the nose. But I think I go a little deeper. It's in my blood. It's in my blood, I always felt it to serve. I had to buck Mr. Swear two and three different times. You know, I didn't give up.
All the truth's coming out tonight.
I did not give up. And I didn't hurt, he didn't, didn't talk bad about him, but I just waited for the time to come around. My grandpa and his brother, we putting up two plaques right there way back. What they did, Fireberry Parish. My grandpa's brother, further than the coastal canal from Texas to Florida, how many ports have been built after they did that? He wasn't the only one that did it, but he brought it up hard. That was a major accomplishment. Yes, I look back on that, I feel this in my blood. Yeah, I've been fighting, I went there how many times with Ms. Curry, I was there when we changed the charter. I was there voting on that, and we, you know, we went through the whole thing, meetings and all. And the, the people that serving on civil service board, the zoning board, they don't get paid a penny. I think they do more hours' work than I do on some occasions, you know? But it's from, it's in your blood, and, uh, went to Baton Rouge, and you'll be good up there, real good. And I even woke up Mr. Vitter, US Senator, seven, uh, million, seven hundred thousand dollars. He sent us to use. In your Iberia, Iberia Parish, we finally used it for arms and lights in the railroad track. It was for, it was for the overpass. One day, that overpass or the hospital or something's gonna be built, like Franklin did on that side of the railroad track. Now the people gotta worry about how to get across that track in Frank, so. There's a lot of things, Catherine Blanco, finally sent us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars we used for the Armoco Canal, we talked about that tonight, for drainage. You know, so there's some things that you go get done while you're sitting here. Get done, that you're proud of, that you can look back on. I don't look at the dollar amount. Yeah, I wish, I wish I never got involved in this. I'd have made so much money with insurance, it's unreal. If I can sell, y'all, I sure can sell that policy. And man, I'd have made a whole lot of money with people all over this state, I would write policies. But, uh, yes, I enjoyed it. Seniors, a lot of people live on set incomes, they don't wanna hear about anybody making more money. Who served the people? And there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people serving that don't make a penny. I nearly do that. But in a big way, uh, yes, I understand where you're coming from, Ms. DeeDee, but I don't think it's a time and a place for the extra dollar, do it from your heart. Family, Mr. Dan, I keep talking about your mom and dad. I talk about mama and my, my mom and dad, and where they come from. And we look back on that, well, that's why we stay in this town, Mr. T Court, you too. So, and Mr. Gosling, we all stay in this town because we got family background that we love. So that's my saying on this, I like what I'm doing. And, um, I'm getting more out. I'm not gonna bring up too much more to go try to get done. Yeah, I'm more out, seventy-two years old. It's old when you get old. Look, I say it like it is, we all say it like it is. I'm leaving Mr. Marlowe with you. They're gonna see us somewhere else. I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished, they're gonna see, but I hate to hear that five hundred dollars the parish only gets paid. Man, I don't know if I wanna go over there.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Well, um, Councilman Woman Reed and I had a conversation before about this in a meeting. And my thing was, um, she said, always get paid what you worth. She told a young man that. And I said, no, think about loving what you do. You know, be satisfied with what you're doing, you know, love what you're doing, and it, it doesn't really matter how much you're gonna get paid. Yes, you wanna get paid enough to pay your bills, it's true, but you know, happiness comes from, uh, being able to enjoy what you're doing. You know, my career in education, of course, teachers don't get paid enough. And that's, that's the fact, for all the work that you do, all the overtime that you put in, all the education that you have to get and all. But in order to be a teacher, you have to love the children and, and love what you're doing. So in, in this position, I feel the same way about it. Uh, when I retired, it was something that I wanted to continue, public service, um, giving back to people, like I've always done, in the classroom. And the amount didn't matter, I didn't know how much we made. And that wasn't an issue. But I could understand that for some people, it would be. I happen to have the time, some people don't have the time for it. And those people could possibly be good candidates. But you have to have the time, you, like you said, heart for it. And it shouldn't matter what you're getting. Now, if the council would vote, now I might be somebody that's falling off, like I might not be. That's that possibility. But I wouldn't wanna stay because, you know, of a raise or anything like that. That's not a reason, um, that I would want to stay, you know? So it depends on, you know, the, the proposal and everything, and, and, and the next people who come in, into these seats. Basically gonna leave it up to them, hopefully I'll be one, but you know, we'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I give everybody a shot.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I think the model of the story is, you know, overworked and underpaid, this is what I'm hearing, right? But you know, I have two companies in, in Iberia, I run both companies, and you know, I got into this not for financial assistance or financial benefits whatsoever, I got in to give back to my communities, like each and every one of y'all have. You know, and I, you know, we heard tonight that, you know, it's hard to spend government money, but in my opinion, this is a very easy way to spend government, without the voice of the people. If we're gonna give elected officials any more money, the people that we represent need to speak, they're paying the bill, they need to speak up. Unfortunately, that's not how it works on the city council, it works that way in the parish council. Cause the voice of the people, that's how you have to get a raise in the parish council. But I feel like, when I go in the grocery store, or I go in Walmart, and I hear people struggling with their electric bills and inflation and the food costs, and I'm gonna say, give me more money as elected official, when you elected me to do this job at that certain pay? I don't think it's right, not, not so ever. Do I think we work more than we pay? Absolutely, I do. But when you get into public service, it's like every, every one of y'all said, it's not about the dollars, it's about what you wanna give back to your community. I see the numbers, other people make, make more than these elected officials, and I get it. But me personally, I, I would never do it for financial gain. I wanna give back and prove the quality of life for my constituents, where they can raise and work and raise their family in a safe environment and employ, and stay here like I've been staying, like my family. You know, I'm six generations in Iberia, and I don't plan on leaving. I wanna be able to say that, you know, I helped kids and helped family stay in Iberia Parish. And, but, but, but giving more money to an elected official when other people are struggling, I have a hard time, family and that, and power and that, I wouldn't be supportive of it at all.
Thank you.
Yes, so, um, first, thank you guys for all your feedback, your comments. Um, and I do understand what you're saying, because the only reason why I'm, I'm sitting in this seat is because when I came back to this town, and I felt like things had regressed rather than progressed, I felt the need to get involved. All I'm trying to do is set us up for the future. Because as we become more innovative, we bring in more complex issues, we're gonna need people who can literally come in here and help the mayor to make some very complex decisions for the future of our, our city. And, um, and I do think people work hard, and I am, and Councilman Ledbetter is right. I do believe that people should be compensated for the worth and the expertise that they bring to the table. Nobody wants to be devalued, nobody. And so my thing is, is that sometimes you get what you pay for, you hardly pay anything, you don't get a whole lot. And as we look toward the future, as we need more, um, qualified people to come into these seats to really help us move this, this, this organization, this city forward, we're going to have to do something about compensation. And it may not be that we do it this time around, I thought, you know what, I'm on my way out, this is probably a good time to bring it up. Most of us are on our way out, there's only two people that are, that we know for a fact that are returning, and then may possibly a third one. And so it would have been a, well, I'm sorry, I wasn't counting there, cause he doesn't vote. But I was counting you, but you don't vote. But here's the thing, I guess my thing was, it was an opportunity for this council to look toward the future. This is not about, this is not about us, this is not about this group of people. I'm trying to get, I was trying to get us to look toward the future, to set us up for success in the future. And this was an opportunity since so, since so many seats were gonna be changing over for us to do this. But if this is not something that this council has a stomach for, then, okay. I was just thinking, it was a great opportunity to set us up for the future. But, you know, maybe this is the wrong time for this group of people.
Thank you.
Everybody done? This was a great discussion, and I'll just say, my pay's not on the table. I am still amazed at seven and a half years that they pay me to do this job, I would come for free. This job is a blast, okay? I, I never had a job that I woke up seven and a half years in, I worked myself for forty years, uh, that, this is just a kick in the butt. So for me, you know, great discussion, I respect every one of yours points, if it ever proceeds, great, if it doesn't, that's fine too. I can tell you that I've had two great councils, and I don't care what they got paid, I mean, what we have accomplished has been as a team. I look forward, I know changes have to come, I totally believe in term limits. I look, I'm so excited about meeting my new team, and I'm gonna work with whoever the voters send me and make a team as we have for the last two councils. But I, I couldn't pay any of y'all enough, last time and this time, for the work that's getting done. I, I, I honor y'all and appreciate every bit of it, but as far as for me, I'm great where I'm at. Don't ever think I'm asking for anything, I'm just thrilled I get to come back and keep doing this job.
But, but Mayor, one thing, the, the charter took care of you, so you get compensated, you get a raise when the people, when the, the, the employees get a raise.
Two percent raise, that's right.
That's my whole point, it's like the, the mayor gets compensated, the people-
The full-time employee, the way it's set up right now, the full-time employee.
Exactly, so my thing is, is that, all I'm saying is that we need to be thinking about how do we do the same thing for the council. And then it's not, if, if you guys are saying it's not right now, if you guys don't have a stomach for it now, maybe some future council will, but my thing is, is that it is unfair that we never look at compensation for the people who are up here doing the hard work. Cause everybody isn't gonna have a forty-year business, or a thirty-year business, or whatever Mr. Broussard did. They're not all gonna have that. So that's unfair that we just assume that because we all have, we're independently okay. I don't, I'm not gonna say I'm wealthy, cause I'm not, I'm just independent. But we can't say that the next group of people are gonna be in the same situation. So why can't we look at setting up the council for success in the future? That's all I'm saying, thank you.
Fifty-three years.
Okay, so even more, so no, you proving my point. You, you've had that business a long time, so this probably doesn't matter to you. But what about that person who would really love to do this, but I'm a school teacher, and if I take time away from doing other things, cause I might need a part-time job? This is not enough compensation. All I'm saying is that this was an opportunity to move it forward.
Thank you.
I'm right behind you, Dan, I'm fifty years.
Well, this was a good discussion, and, uh, we have one more. So moving on to seven B.
A discussion relating to the process to submit properties for tall grass nuisances, Marlon Lewis.
Yeah, may I ask to put this on the agenda of-
Yeah, may I ask to place on the agenda a few weeks ago? I'm not gonna keep our people here long. It shouldn't be a long conversation. But I want it on record and record is, um, you know, the open channel where they can go watch and understand what we go through as a council for grass. Um, I mean, grass is one of the biggest issues during the summertime. And part of the reason is because of the process in which we have to use to get grass cut. Uh, I found out that in, in my, um, this summer particularly, I mean, I got grass in my district that was, you know, should have been cut at least once this cup, summer that hadn't been cut all year. And lots that never turned into a forest look like a forest now. And to me, that's bringing down the neighborhood horribly. And I mean, I just wish, first of all, I need the public to know what the process is and I'll let you do that, cause you know the process better than I know it. Uh, I know it too, but you know, you can tell the public what the process is, why it takes so long to get a lot cut. Uh, you or Matt can tell the public why it takes so long to get a lot cut. Cause I mean, I don't mind getting beat up, but like I said, I love what I do. So, you know, I, I take it. I take it all in. And I'm able to tell people, hey, this is why you can't get it cut. Some of them agree, some of them like it, some of them don't, but I give them the law. Maybe they, maybe they can't hear it from me. Maybe they can't hear it from me. And I'm gonna be honest, I look at some of the grass just on the streets where I'm, where I live, West Avenue and Lombard Street, just them streets. I'm saying to myself, I'm like, man, if I had a nice lawnmower and a crew, I'd keep them cut myself. But reality, I'm, I'm not doing it. That's not my job to go cut other people's lot. I, I'm not doing it. But I definitely would like to see the neighborhood look better. The neighborhood that I was elected to represent.
Yes, sir.
Lombard, Frenzel, um, you know, uh, what's the other street, uh, Amber Lewis Avenue? I mean, it, that, that don't make no sense, man. I'm like, we gotta do something. But again, it's the process, you know, it's the process. One more thing I'm gonna throw out there, they had an old man, and I tell people, if you got a lot next to you and it's a small lot, when you cut your grass, cut that lot. There's an older man that I know, he was doing it for years. He talked, he start calling, he say, man, you need the city to cut it. I asked him, I said, why you don't cut it? And he just looked at me and said, man, I'm too old for that now. So it, you could start off doing it and then you get tired doing it, you know? He too old for it. I'm too young for it to be running around cutting other people's property. You know, I'm, I'm, you know, so I just need the public to know the process that we all.
Yes.
I got a package, I got, I had got the, uh, the secretary to give me a list of all of the grass lots that we turned in. And this is about fifteen pages and just in my district probably. So I'm not really blaming the city. I'm blaming the process. That's it.
Understood. Well, I can tell you that and I'm gonna turn it over to Matt. But we cut, every year that I've been here, we cut more and more and more lots. So we are becoming people's yard man. And they are getting bills or it's going on their taxes and they're getting seventy-five dollar letters that give them a notification, yet thinking that that, that's a severe thing. That's a big fine. But thinking that that would help to reduce the lots, the opposite effect, for whatever reason has happened and that we're cutting more grass every year. And that's the same crews that are doing street work and drainage work and, uh, anything else that we need to do that Public Works does. So it, we, we are overwhelmed. I'll be the first to admit it because people are not picking up, cutting their own grass, being responsible, doing their own thing. So it's gotten worse instead of better of the following. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Matt and let him tell y'all the process. Cause it takes a while.
The process starts with you guys and the citizens bringing it to our attention, right? That's, that's how it starts. That's how it should start, you know? Um, you've brought me multiple lists. I think most everybody here has brought me a handful, maybe more in some other districts, you know? But, um, if I, if we wanna go over some numbers, last year, we finalized or billed two hundred and seventy-two parcels. This year so far, we have three hundred and sixty. We're not even finished.
When you say billed, you mean sent invoice to or?
Sent invoice to. We, we've gotten paid a hundred and forty-three thousand last year and a hundred and thirty-two thousand so far of this year.
Percentage wise on the number billed out, fifty, sixty, seventy?
Yeah, I don't.
You don't know?
No. This is something I just put together today.
Okay, no problem.
Last night we realized we need, I need to come discuss this. So, uh, I wish I had more years behind this. To reflect on, you know, more of the.
So tomorrow those acquisitions is getting worse.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
It is getting worse, yeah. I mean, I have.
What you say?
In, in two thousand and three, I had two hundred and ninety-four billed properties. Uh, or I have public work orders for, this year I have over two hundred and, no, three hundred and fifty-five, fifty-six. And we not even finished yet. And I have eighty in progress. I have eighty divided up between, where's my numbers? Uh, pending cut, uh, ready to build or sorry, in progress and assigned to Public Works. So eighty within that in progress right now. Now, after we get told where the property's at, what, what's going on from you guys or the, or the constituents, um, we have a process of grass is ten days, junk is fifteen days, right? So I know we're not talking about junk per se, but it is hand in, it goes hand in hand, you know?
You're saying they need ten, you give them ten days to cut it?
No, once we receive back the letter or we receive, um, uh, notification that they've gotten it.
That they've gotten it.
Right. Some letters we don't get back, so we have to resend another letter.
Yeah, hold another rounds in town.
And that is, I think, the biggest hurdle when dealing with something like this. Because let's say the address is in New Iberia, certified mail, eight, almost nine dollars now. Goes to Baton Rouge, goes Lafayette, gets lost. We track it twice a week. We track it, right? We have to send another letter, wait for it. And ten days starts when we know that the letter comes back or that constituent has received that letter. So it's, it's another week and a half.
Sometimes it's a month before we know, cause sometimes they go three times.
Yeah. So. That's the process.
Okay. Yeah.
To simplify it, and that's the numbers I have.
So. And part of, part of what we're dealing with is more properties than we ever had before. It's always been a problem. It's a bigger problem now. We have to give them notice by registered mail or by publication in the newspaper because that's what our ordinance says and that's what the state law says that we follow. So in the old days, we had a paper that came out every day, right? So you could do publications a lot easier. In the old days, the post office delivered the mail. I don't know what they're doing today, but, you know, we're, we're not getting stuff back in the mail. So there are legal delays that we have. Um, if you had more people doing the same thing at the same time, you know, you could probably get more grass cut. But I don't know if the city's gonna want more personnel, you know, more people doing what Matt's doing, more people doing the, the mowing. It's always been a problem. And those properties, you know, it's not like cutting the, you know, I cut my yard up to, I'll be doing it soon. I had to quit for a few weeks. But I've cut my yard and I know, you know, I know where the holes are. I know where the problems are. You get up, you get these, these lots, you don't know what kind of concrete and garbage and all kinds of stuff you got under those blades. And it's expensive to cut those properties and it's not cheap to hire somebody to do that. So, you know, it's not like cutting a, a regular yard. So it's always gonna be a problem and it's always gonna be a mess because the harvest is plentiful, you know? And we don't have enough labors out there to cut, to cut all that grass. But, you know, I think Matt's doing the best he can, you know, getting these things processed. And I think we're pretty, as efficient as we can be by getting the money back, you know? But it's just, it's a mess. And if you're gonna blame anybody, blame the landowner first. You know, we're, what we're doing is, is, is cleaning up after irresponsible people. And we're doing the best job we can. That's just my two cents.
Oh, and I just gotta say, I know Matt is doing a good job. Me and Matt talk all the time over demolition and grass.
Yeah, he is.
And it's a process.
He is, he is. And it's, it's an unavoidable process.
Matt, do you feel like if we would consider putting more teeth in ordinance that it would have helped you in your endeavor of trying to get these yards cut by the private landowner versus the city cutting them? Question.
Say that again, if we put.
So if we put more teeth in ordinance, would it benefit you in a way to get the private landlord to cut it more than having the city going and doing, addressing?
What, when you say teeth?
Yeah, we'll increase the fine, increase the whatever. I don't know.
It's pretty hefty as it is. It, it is a seventy-five dollar fee.
I know, but I'm just saying, is that enough?
For me to send a notice.
Seventy-five to just tell you to cut the grass.
Yeah, that's pretty hefty, in, in my opinion, you know?
Yeah.
And if that's not moving them, I don't, I don't.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a good point, but I don't know what's gonna move them.
Yeah. So.
Any, any chance we would go back to using, well, I know based on what, um, Jeff just said, that's probably not an option, but I'm just seeing about subcontractors to help us out.
It's too expensive. They tried that. It didn't save any money. And then the other problem is what the city found out in the past. I wasn't here, but, uh, cause even when I was the pro temp, we didn't sub it out. When they subbed it out, they didn't have the people to do anything else. Which you gotta realize, our grass cutters are dual employees.
It's part-time.
They're the same ones on the road. They're the same ones working the ditches. They're the same ones running the equipment, you know, cleaning our ditches. So the problem is you sub all of that out with the money that the sub, I already looked into this. That's a subcontractor's cost. You're doubling your workforce and you can't afford to keep all of those workers. So you would end up cutting some people, that I would hate to do, but you'd end up cutting some people because now you don't need all the grass cutters. Well, you, you bleeding out of both ends because you won't have any, any crews to do anything else. And look, the parks cut grass. They have their own crews that cut grass. They barely keep up, you know? And, and let's face it, we've expanded. We have two new parks coming. We bought a school. We are constantly, you know, doing something new and different, which is a great thing to do. Where we have the same people cutting the grass. So we have grown, people have become more responsible. But again, I don't think we can afford to sub it all out because we're gonna, we're gonna lose our workforce for other things that we can't afford. I can't double deal. In other words, if I pay them and pay our people, we don't have enough money to do that. So it's, it's a dilemma.
You, you said the fine and that goes on the taxes, right? At the end of the year?
We, yeah.
Right? So average lot would be cut, what, four times a year?
During the summer, it has to be cut more than that.
So you, you, I'm trying to see the average that goes on the taxes at the end of the year. How many dollars you think goes on the taxes?
It depends on the property. I mean, it's, it's.
And what, what is, say, say goes on taxes, they have to pay their taxes. So Mayor, what is the percentage of the ones that they pay their taxes on those lots?
A whole bunch of them, we never gonna collect.
Yeah.
I'm not being ugly, but a whole lot of them, they're not paying their taxes at all. And then they end up becoming adjudicated property, which takes years and years for that to happen. So really, we're cutting a lot of grass that, you know.
We'll never get it back.
Yeah, total taxpayer's expense. We'll never get it back.
That's, so you might be talking about, what do you think, fifty percent?
If I had to just, I don't, I don't know for sure, but it, it's a big percentage. Cause I mean, I see our money going out. It's not coming back in.
I mean.
It's not, it's not hard to figure that.
They have no incentive to do it. I mean.
Right.
So I don't think what fine you put, what teeth is gonna change.
I agree.
You know, unless we find a way in a system where we can grab ownership of that property quicker than the process that, that we have right now.
Even when property's adjudicated, we don't ever take ownership of it. Because then we'd have all the liability. We'd have to insure it. We'd have to, so we have, that's where we're trying to revamp our whole paying McKinley James.
Right.
We got a whole nother thing coming and maybe even another department to handle that at some point once we figure out all the mechanics of it. Because we just end up, we have probably five hundred and eighty-something to six hundred lots that are in limbo. We don't want them because we can't take the liability and they're just sitting there and people have walked away from them. That's not to count all the ones that are leading up to that or all the ones that somebody owns and they're paying the taxes, they still getting a seventy-five dollar letter and not cutting the grass. It's a, it's, it's a big challenge.
I don't think what we do is gonna change that unless.
That mowed a lawn thing you were trying to get Ms. Ledbetter, that, that would be great. Cause people would probably, that would incentivize.
Still working on that.
That would incentivize some people.
We met about it, met about it last week.
Yeah, we met about it last week with McKinley James, who, the attorney who hard to work on that. We are hoping that grows some teeth and then an adjudicated piece of property is next to you and cut the grass for a year and end up with the piece of property.
Yeah, that's it, man.
How often will that work? You know, Lafayette does it. So we've got the idea.
Yeah.
Um, that will help. That will help. How far it's gonna go, I don't know. Are all of the six hundred adjudicated properties next to somebody's gonna cut them?
No.
No.
Well.
But.
Some of them, I know a lot of them, oh yeah, a lot of them that's waiting for that.
Oh, yeah.
Still ask.
Fifty to a hundred off the rolls, that's more time that we'd be doing something else.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Anything.
So we're, we're making, we see the problem and we're trying to make, again, we all talk about our slow government moves, but we are trying to put new things in place to alleviate some of this, you know?
We do mowed on and demoed on too, cause. I mean, if I tear down his mind and they're not cut.
And all the houses we gonna tear down, those lots are gonna become added to the roll.
Correct.
Yeah. And I mean, remember, we're spending five hundred thousand of the state's money, another four fifty of ARPA money to do demos. So we are gonna create, we need to get rid of the blight. It's unsafe. And it's, uh, bringing people's property values down and it's not doing any good. Uh, if any activities happening there, it's not good. But we're gonna make a more lot. A whole lot more lots.
But we, we definitely need to keep them cut because we have senior citizens that are complaining about rodents in the grass.
Oh, yes. No, no, it's, that's a fact.
I hope, Mayor, I hope I'm not wrong. I tell people who got an adjudicated property next to them, I tell them, cut it. It's yours.
One day it'll be yours.
No, I mean, it's check the people, it's too much to, you know, it's the taxes and the liens on it supersede the value of the property. Nobody gonna buy. It's making your property look bad. Cut it. Put your movable tent on it. I'm serious.
Yeah.
Put your movable tent on it. Something that you can move just in case.
Park your cars on it.
You know, park your cars on it.
Legal cars, man.
I mean.
I was about to say, let's not go there.
Yeah, I know.
Put your, you know, one of them on it. Just park your couple of cars on it. I mean.
How about just put a garden on it? Let's not park any cars on it.
Garden is too much work.
Oh, yeah.
They not gonna work that hard.
And speaking of lots, okay, we still need applications for our ARPA demo program.
Right.
If you have something to tear down, this is your one opportunity for the city to tear it down for free. Not in an adversarial role. You just come. If you meet the requirements, they are requirements, proof of ownership, blah, blah, blah. But if you meet the requirements, we'll tear it down. And we have four hundred and fifty thousand. We have commitments of some. The first half a million's committed. The four fifty, we still have openings. So that's another thing, kinda while we on this. If you, if you wanna create an empty lot, then we'll have to figure out who's gonna cut the grass. This is your opportunity.
We do have online submission. I don't know if everybody knows that though, since we have this new software. It's the easiest possible that you can file a complaint.
File a complaint.
Anything.
So it's, they go to the city of New Iberia?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, we've been talking about this and nobody announced that.
Well, we just got it set up and actually some departments are still training on it, but we're getting there and it's gonna be useful. It's gonna be useful.
Absolutely. Cause that, that's a, a big deal. People should be able to submit their own stuff.
You always have some pushback when you start something new and it just taking a little while and not every department is, is, is doing as well as other departments, but it's, it's coming.
Okay, well, good. That's good to know. Thank you.
Appreciate all their work, cause I think it's gonna be worthwhile.
Well, I mean, I prefer to do it that way than having a, I sent an email and take pictures and stuff. I can just go online and do it.
Do all of the above. I mean, don't, tell everybody that you talk to.
Yeah.
Submit the complaint, cause we don't, if we don't hear about it.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't ride around.
But I mean, I'd rather put it in the system than send her an email than she has to put it in the system. That's double work. I can just put it in the system.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That works. I mean, it's senior citizens. I'll probably have to do it to them, but other people, I'll just tell them, go to the website.
It's super easy.
Hey, Matt.
I've been waiting for this.
Besides, besides the slats in the fence, you know? You're doing a real good job in my, besides, so if you can stay on top of that, man.
We will.
We're not saying names, you know?
Did we, we've not finished that ordinance, have we?
So keep an eye on that.
We sure will.
So Jeff, as long as they, if they, if it's next door and they keep it clean for their own safety, they just can't bill on it, right?
Well, it's not their property.
Be a good neighbor.
I'm, I'm not gonna tell people they can go take their neighbor's property.
I'm, I'm.
Have I cut a neighbor's property? Yes, I have. Yeah. I have.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
And what I tell people about that, eventually we should have the ordinance in order to, you know, after a certain amount of time, if you've mowed, uh, for X number of years or whatever, after a certain amount of time, if you've mowed for X number of years or whatever, and you'll be able to file the paperwork and all and get that done, and it'll be yours. So the idea is to keep records of everything that you've done, you know, for the number of years that you've done it. And that, when it comes, when the ordinance goes into effect, then you have all of this to fall back on. So you haven't cut it all these years for naught.
That's on tax sale properties. That's on tax sale properties.
You get half the properties with the neighbor cutting the grass for a year, and is there, like Lafayette's doing? Any kind of way you can fast-track that?
That's what we're talking about.
We get half the properties off our own this.
That's what we're working on.
So we appreciate it if y'all can work on that.
Taking a little while to develop the ordinance, I'll be coming to y'all.
Look, just one thing, I mean, I think I commend you for the effort you're doing and what you're doing, but, and Dan's gonna echo this, it doesn't matter what we do, the neighbor next door to the property is still saying we're not doing good enough. You know, and you try to, and we try to convince them, and we tell them, but it's just, I mean, you can, it just can't, can't.
People don't understand, and I'm gonna tell y'all what I get, and I'm sorry. I bet you they don't do that across the bay, that's what I get.
They do. Oh, they do, me and Dan type of one.
We've got grass problems everywhere.
But they say they don't, you wouldn't wanna live next to it, and I agree.
Yeah, no bias.
But a lot of people gonna call the city before they talk to their neighbor.
Who wants to live next to it?
They don't wanna, they don't wanna talk to the neighbor.
They'll call the city and complain before they talk to their neighbor.
That's true.
That's true. That's exactly right, Jeff, exactly.
Happens often.
Yep.
Last week.
Yep, every week.
Yep.
And they call a lawyer before they talk to their neighbor. Or the sister.
Yeah. Anybody else? Well, this, as usual, was a good discussion. We've had a whole bunch of them tonight, can't thank you enough. And now it's time for councilman's remarks, and I will start with Councilman Dog.
Well, let's think safety, because kids start at school, and they could be on the streets, and watch those speed zones.
Yep.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, two things. One, remind everybody that on September tenth, we're having the political forum at the Weston Park from six to eight. We hope to have all the candidates there, so please come and hear from the candidates, so you can decide on who you are interested in voting for. That will be the Sessor, the Mayor Pro Temp, the District Two, District Three, and District Five. Also, we're also gonna have the zyko bingo dancing on September nineteenth, so kind of keep that on your calendar. And I was gonna go through the Act seven eighteen, but we've had such a long meeting, I'm gonna keep that for the next meeting, and I will explain what the act will do. And this is an act that we actually got passed through the state. And so it's not only gonna benefit our community, but all the communities around the state of Louisiana.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I passed tonight.
Well, thank you.
Just one comment, I gotta, other than my phone blowing up, and I'm not being comical about it, my phone blowing up on increased pay of the council. My second most call this week was commending the effort of Public Works for doing, called, it's, three people called me, they complained about some vines by the city park, they called Public Works, and they wanted the next day, because a lot of people walk in with and experiencing the vines, and they cleaned it up, and they were just saying, they tell Public Works, thank you for the efforts they do. So just a shout out to Public Works for following up on some requests.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Pelican, doing very, very good. Keep it up. Man, up already, but it's been doing real good in my district, and I hope they keep it up. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna thank the people that, I wasn't able to attend, we was at LMA, Louisiana Municipal Association Conference. I wanna thank the people that went out this past weekend, G-Pal, Cliff's Impressive Cuts. I think they partnered with the city of New Iberia for going out there and, you know, going back to school driving, haircuts for kids and stuff like that, I thought that was very nice. And I'm usually there helping out with haircuts, but I just wanna thank those people for going out and serving, giving the service back to our community. That's all I have, I don't think we have any other events that I know of right off the bat. That's it.
Mayor, can I say one thing, since I said I was gonna pass? But I just want everybody to know. Yeah, I'm unpassing, that COVID is alive and well. I had COVID recently. My fellow council member, DeeDee Reed, had COVID. We have another council member absent with COVID. COVID is going around, all the urgent care places are full of people with COVID. This one is a different strain, and it's pretty serious. So protect yourselves if you happen to get it, go to the doctor, get your medication, or take care of it at home, wear your mask, protect others. But just know that it's still there, and school is about to open too. So that's additional, that's something additional that's coming about. So just be as safe as you can and protect yourself, wear your mask, wash your hands, do what you have to do. Thank you.
I can tell you that, I still don't have my energy back from COVID.